Mike, are we ready? All right. We'll call the Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 Reno County Commission to Order. At this time, we'll stand for the flag salute. We'll have a prayer following the flag salute by Pastor Steve Gill of the Turon Community Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, pastor.
Okay. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. We acknowledge your greatness and the awesomeness of who you are. Lord, we're living in troubled times, so many people pulling at so many different things and coming from us in different directions. Lord, I pray for these men upon this council that you give them wisdom and guidance as they work through the many difficult issues that come before them, or give them patience and understanding that come from you. And Lord, to know we're trying to improve the situations for the citizens of Reno County. It is so important, Lord, that we support these men. I ask that you bless them and thank them for their faithfulness in serving our state and our community. Lord, just be with them during this meeting again, just guide, direct them, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, pastor. I want to welcome everyone. I have a couple of announcements that I like to make regarding our sound system and audio, visual, the fact that we changed it over. Mike was here last night late and again this morning, and I want to thank him for working with the system to transfer it from a kind of a portable system over to a permanent fixture. And so where something goes a little bit awry, we'll try to get it fixed. And the other thing is I wanted to mention that this Friday at 11 o'clock in front of the law enforcement center, that the peace officer memorial will be held at 11 o'clock. In case of inclement weather, it'll be held down in the courthouse in the Veterans Room. And then I want to special thank to Rotary and the Crime Stoppers for providing the noon of food. So that's all I have for the way of announcements. So at this time, we'll come to public comments. And first up will be Seth Dewey from the Substance Misuse Health Educator Reno County Health Department.
Good morning, every one. My name is Seth Dewey. I work over at the Health Department in the health education field, particularly dealing with substance misuse. The pastor said something very interesting in his prayer. He talked about the difficult times that we are living in and the things that we're facing. And as we all know, we're experiencing a public health crisis on not only a national level, but also a state level, and especially recently, a local level. The toll is being felt in all of our communities from overdose and substance abuse. From conversations in people in recovery and the advancements that have been made in addiction science, we've learned that there is not a one-size-fits-all approach to the issues that we're facing. Therefore, the Reno Recovery Collaborative, formerly known as the Reno County Drug Impact Task Force, has been meeting regularly since 2015 to address these issues. They're made up of various community organizations and partners from the substance abuse field to law enforcement, to EMS, and to the medical professional community, but most of all, with concerned community citizens. Our community has made many advancements, but more improvements are needed. Therefore, we, as the Reno Recovery Collaborative, are inviting everyone in our community to take part in some events that are going to be happening this summer, particularly the ones starting off this next Thursday, at the Third Thursday event for this month, which is May 20th. Our purpose is to remove the stigma that is associated with substance abuse. We'll feature discussions from panelists from our various partners and Reno County residents. Changing the stigma and the language around substance abuse and the way we look at these things requires effort not only of ourselves, but from the community as a whole. So please join us on May 20th at the Third Thursday event in front of the Hutch Rec Building on First Street between Main and Mulnet, and then again at the Fox Theater for every month over the summer, Friday, June 25th, Friday, July 16th, and Friday, August 13th. Remember, we need everyone in our community to have a part of these discussions so that we can make a lasting change benefiting all of Reno County. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Seth. Come ask a question. Carla?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. I believe Jackson or Aubrey, you had asked for time at this point.
You want me to hand that letter in?
One, two, right there.
There we go. There we go. I have that already.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Aubrey Abbott Patterson with Hutchinson Community Foundation with Ms. Jackson Swear of Startup Hutch, and we're here representing eight organizations in our community that serve the community countywide and all the people they serve in Reno County. You received a letter from us a week ago today, and today we're coming to you to share that and to have a bit of a discussion with you about it, we hope. But I'd like to read the letter so that our guests here and online can hear it and then answer any questions you have. So this was an open letter to you and to other government-elected officials across Reno County, so City of Hutchinson, other city governments, and we start this way. The approximately seventeen-plus million dollars our cities and county are poised to receive from the American Rescue Plan represent one of the largest positive infusions of cash into local government budgets in decades. The decisions we make in the coming weeks about the fate of these taxpayer dollars come with high stakes because they will determine whether we simply enjoy a brief stimulus or cede a new trajectory for economic growth and resilience. In ten years, how will we answer this question? Did we merely spend the money, or did we invest it? As the American Rescue Plan funding flows through our city and county governments, deploying it effectively will require a team, and deciding the most prudent investments for our future will require input from the residents these decisions affect. Therefore, we call on Reno County, the City of Hutchinson, and other city governments to allow residents to prioritize 100% of the spending of this federal stimulus. I'd like to turn it over to Jackson to talk about the resident engagement part of this.
Thank you. To help engage as many voices as possible, including small business owners, neighborhood leaders, social service agencies, philanthropic leaders, and corporate heads, our organizations stand ready to partner with you in designing and implementing a trustworthy countywide decision-making process. The prioritization of funding can begin with the considering of multiple studies, plans, and surveys our communities already have in hand, such as the comprehensive plans by the City of Hutchinson and Reno County, the five-year community improvement plan, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the Housing Needs Assessment, tourism studies, and the recent downtown revitalization study. At this critical turning point, let's trust the wisdom of our residents by giving them a voice on these important funding decisions. They have the answers that we seek. Years from now, let's be able to say Reno County invested well, created a competitive edge for its economy, and positioned itself as a connected, thriving, and resilient community for generations to come. Sincerely, Aubrey Abbott Patterson, Hutchinson Community Foundation, Deborah Tuftel, Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, Tony Finley, Hutch Rec, Jackson Swear, Startup Hutch, Lisa Gleason, United Way of Reno County, Calvin Wright, Hutchinson NAACP, Logan Lewenberger, Young Professionals of Reno County, and Lynette Lacy from Leadership Reno County. So would stand for any questions or any feedback from you? I'll just comment.
I'll just make a comment and maybe a question. How do you think, you wrote your letter on May 4th. The government regulations from the Treasury Department came out yesterday, there's six of them for possible uses. How do you think those regulations address your letter or how your letter addresses those regulations?
I think that, you know, we're still working through exactly what this means. I'm sure the staff at the city and the county are doing the same. My interpretation of the most recent guidance is that there will be some flexibility in how the funds can be spent based on the needs that are identified by the local government, the local entities. You know, addressing negative economic impacts and supporting public health response, these are, and equity-focused services as well, I think, open up a lot of possibilities for how this funding could be spent. And surely, of course, as I think both at the city and the county level, so there's some available funding here for infrastructure needs that I think will be certainly part of how this gets spent. Part of what I think we're asking for is to have some, is to help have some public engagement in making some decisions about what kinds of infrastructure spending might get made, of course, with input from the staffs and with the final decisions being made by the elected officials.
Okay, but, and I don't mean to be argumentative, but oh, but as far as infrastructure, it says infrastructure improvements for clean drinking water, vested wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure. You know, that's pretty condensed.
Yes, and broadband as well as a separate category.
I believe if I'm, approximately about $5 million goes to the City of Hutchinson. I don't have the information for the rest of the cities around, and approximately 12 million goes to the county. And so whereas inputs always desired from elected officials, like you said, the final decisions have to be made by us, but input is always, our emails and phones are available too.
Well, and we'd ask you to consider a more formal process than the emails and phones, right? That we could help, we're not asking you to engage all the people across Reno County on your own, but that together we could do that, all of our organizations, along with the cities and the county, that we, we're good at this, at engaging people, and that that could help inform the decisions that you will then make. And we believe very strongly that this is a turning point for our community, both in the amount of money that's coming and the decisions that can be made, but also the public participation in the process is important, and that that could turn these decisions into a more positive outlook than to have the usual scrutiny. Well, there'll always be scrutiny, but, you know, sometimes the negative scrutiny when people don't have a chance to be involved in the decision-making. And so we'd like to help you do that and get more people involved, knowing that the final decisions will come back to the elected officials.
And I think that's one of the things we did with the CARES Act money in the process of distributing that, was to reach out, and that was just what we did at that time, so. I think the small difference here is the fact that the CARES Act money had to be spent quickly. I think it's money at the end of 2024, so there's more time for this process to take place. So from my standpoint, I don't disagree with your request, but I think that any quick knee-jerk reaction to the request might not be the appropriate reaction.
I appreciate you guys being here and taking the initiative and engaging early in this conversation and really pushing us to think through the proper process. I think it's very valuable for us to hear that early. Do you, do you feel like, do you have a recommendation for this commission as far as, it looks like you have kind of an ad hoc group of community stakeholders, is, are you looking to take a lead in the community engagement process?
Yes, I think we are looking to take the lead in the community engagement process. I think that this collection of organizations has the necessary connections out into the community in combination with some of their resources. And I think what, one thing I'll add to what Aubrey was saying earlier is I think that there's, because there's so much funding flowing into both the city and the county, I think that some collaborative strategic thinking on how the funding gets spent will be important to maximizing how our community leverages that, all of that funding. I think we'd like to see the formation of some sort of a task force of sorts. I think, in my mind, and I think in some of our, in our discussions leading up to this, we have in mind what worked well with the Reno County Economic Recovery Task Force and bringing people together to guide some of that process, particularly very early on. And I think really some collaboration and partnership from the county. I'm looking over at Randy because I'm imagining Randy, Randy holds the keys to the knowledge about what all of the different projects and what's possible will be from the county's assets.
Well, given the guidance is now out, it seems like we should place on our agenda in the near future, a conversation about how this money will be directed and the plan of which to make those decisions. And I think this group here, given their volunteering, their time, I think we should consider asking them to be a part of that, for sure. Is that something we can add to the agenda in two weeks, start that discussion?
In my mind, that not sooner than 30 days would be my suggestion because we have a lot of time to go, and the staff needs to look at things and digest the government's programs, so. But I think we look forward to, I'm thinking, but look forward to see what this group has in mind yet. I think they're just pretty general yet. And does that sound like that's something that we'd look at?
What if we were to put more details to that general plan to outline for you what an engagement process across the county could look like, and we came back in two weeks and just shared what that could look like? Because we have tried to stay pretty general. We want to know if you're interested in this and if you, if you want us to move forward, we could do that, I think, in the next two weeks.
I think we have interest. I think your timeline is a little aggressive. I think good things can be done with longer thought than quick thought. I'm more inclined to think like the chairman, that 30 days would be a good time to visit about this. And I agree with Daniel that we don't want to drop it and that we want to hear an approach, but to do it quickly, I think, will not get us as good of information, both from your group and from our administration, as far as how we should proceed. So I agree, but disagree on time.
Keep pushing, and as soon as you have something ready, get it to Randy, and I'm sure we can get you back on the agenda.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to make public comments that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, any additions or revisions to the agenda?
I don't think so, no.
No. Randy? Go. All right, seeing no additions or revisions, we'll go to the consent agenda. That contains vouchers of bills of $425,683.79 and an audit agreement with Adams Brown LLC. Any comment that you care to make regarding the audit agreement? I think we all have the information here.
Well, just to start the discussion, if there is any, I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Move to second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
I'm acceptable to the county administrator's suggestion that they're pleased with the current auditor and with costs being similar to what we've seen in the past. I'm favorable to that suggestion.
We'll call real call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda would be the business items, which is, first up is a proposal from TBS Electronics in the amount of $186,956 for the purchase of new portable radios for use by deputies of the Reno County Sheriff's Office. Darian?
Hey, good morning. Darren Campbell, Reno County Sheriff. I'll give you a little bit of backstory on these radios. Back in 2008, maybe a little bit even before that, it was basically after 9/11, when communications, being able to laterally communicate with adjoining jurisdictions or any critical event that may occur, we started looking at going onto a state system with an 800 megahertz radios. And we actually, I wasn't deeply involved in that when it, when it occurred. I believe there was a 12-year lease agreement that got paid off early by the time that we actually went online with these between March and April of 2010. These were the current radios that we have now. Each deputy's assigned a portable radio that they carry with them, and then there's one that's installed in their vehicle. So when they're in their vehicle, it's a more reliable radio to reach the towers. The state system's been a very, very reliable system, and these radios have been in service now for 11 years. They've worked very well. However, we have had some issues with them, with the knobs and stuff like that. Motorola has ceased making, stopped making the 2500s, which we currently carry, along with the batteries, they stopped manufacturing them. Toward the end of the year, we actually bought a little bit to try to hold out because after about four or five years, the batteries start to go bad, and they're, they're about $100 a pop to replace, approximately. The state system is going through a series of upgrades. At first, they came out with a deadline. It was about a year and a half ago, they came out this deadline that by January 1st, 2024, everybody needed to have 4,000 radios, or they wasn't going to be able to be on the state system. I believe that they received a little bit of kickback from some of the smaller jurisdictions that can't afford that type of transition. But that's when we started looking at what we were going to do as far as budget-wise or start looking at replacing our radios due to that factor. So they did away with the deadline, however. They're going to still allow the 2500s to be on the system, but if something happens to that radio and it drops off, they're not going to be allowed on the system. So ultimately, we are kind of being forced to go transition to the 4000s. The opportunity kind of presented itself this year when we had the Special Equipment Reserve Fund, we was able to roll over some fundings into it. That doesn't mess with increasing our budget. It's funds that weren't spent last year due to the status of everything. There was some saved funds that we rolled over into that equipment fund, and we saw an opportunity to try to make this happen, and that's what we're requesting today is for approval.
Has Motorola given any indication of how long they'll support these products?
The 4000?
The new ones?
Again, I don't, I don't have any idea. I imagine it's like any other electronic.
They tell us 10 years before they sunset them, so they'll notify us 10 years before they sunset them.
Okay.
Explain that a little bit more to everybody.
So when Motorola told us when we were looking at purchasing new radios, they'll give us a 10-year notice before they decide to sunset the radios and no longer support them. So if we purchase today and they decide tomorrow, hey, we're going to, we're going to start taking these offline, we'll get a 10-year notice. So a minimum of 10 years from purchase date.
Real quick, do you know when, how long the 4000 have been manufactured? Yeah, okay. Like any other electronic.
Certainly, this isn't a surprise from the Sheriff's Department or emergency management. We've been, we were made aware of this two years ago, I think, Adam, about then or something that this was going to be coming, and at much of the cost, we have to stay current. So I support the recommendation of the Sheriff.
I like Commissioner Sellers, remember a couple of years ago when it was first brought up, that this was coming down the line? So any other questions? Will I take a motion to, with regard to the TBS Electronics and the amount of 186,956?
Some of.
Second. Move to second to approve the proposal from the Sheriff and from TBS Electronics to provide the purchase of 60 new radios, portable radios, excuse me. Thank you, gentlemen.
Need to call room.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Thank you, Sheriff. Now is the planning and zoning case 2021 to a 2005 request for a used permit to establish a personal training and fitness studio at 4516 North Kent Road. Mark?
Morning, Mr. Fisher. Mark von Achen, county planner. Currently, this business is operating as a home occupation, and then right now, the owner is requesting to expand that business to go beyond our home occupation rules, so therefore, a conditional use permit is going to be required to expand that business. Now, this training will occur three times a week, and we will average between five and 18 people per day over a 13-hour period, with no more than eight people at one time receiving that service. Activities for the training facility will occur in a 26-by-30 area within their 42-by-60 sheds, so the entire shed is not being used for that purpose, I think. One of the bigger issues that we addressed during the planning commission meeting was parking. Current regulations require one space per 200 square feet of area used for the gym. That equates out to the regulations requiring four spaces. The number of stalls staff looked at is not really adequate if you're going to be serving eight people plus any employees that would be on there. So in looking at their site plan, they provided an area that would equate to 22 parking spaces, so staff recommended that the parking stalls be installed according to that site plan. The parking area is not required to be paved due to the fact that Kent Road is a dirt road in that area, so there's no issues with paving. There's also going to be no additional lighting that you would normally find, like associated with a parking lot or a business. It's all going to be just the typical residential lighting, and so there's no concern on that end. Looking at some of the factors, I won't go over all of them, but we'll certainly answer questions if you have them. I'll just highlight a few that we, we looked at. Number two, we believe that the use is compatible based off of the intensity of the activities and the location of the shed on the property. If you take a look at the zoning map that I provided, the shed is located way in the back part of the property here, and it's not near any other residences. Highlight number six here, the property is suitable for the use. We believe that there is obviously enough area to park cars in the property, and there's adequate screening to lessen any kind of dust or noise that would occur with cars traveling down their driveway and creating a problem. Again, all the residences are pretty far away from this use right here. Number seven here is the comprehensive plan. You can see there are a lot of the objectives seem to be in favor of this, and there were some objectives that seemed to kind of call into question whether this is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, but in reviewing the comprehensive plan, we have determined that this land use is compatible with our comprehensive plan. So with that, staff recommended approval of the request based off of the seven factors that you see listed in my report. We did attach six conditions of approval to the conditional use permit, and those are listed in your staff report. We did have one person email me saying that he was against the proposal. I tried to reach out to that person, and he did not return my email or phone calls, so I don't know exactly what the specific concerns were on his part. You do have his comments in the email that he sent me, though. No other people really responded in favor or against this proposal. On April 15th, the planning commission or against this proposal. On April 15, the planning commission did conduct a public hearing, and out of that public hearing, it was revealed that no plans for a permanent restroom facility are going to be located in the building. Right now, they're using just portable restrooms outside of that building. There's really no plans for additional expansion. Any plans that they're going to use for expansion will be conducted online, so there's not going to be additional employees or additional people coming to the facility. They will use portable heaters in the wintertime to keep the facility warm, and likewise, they'll use fans in the summertime to keep the area cool. So with that, the planning commission recommended approval of the request by a seven-to-nothing vote. So with that, I'd stand for questions.
Now, Mark, what is the requirement in your file here? You have a group of adjacent property owners that were notified. How big an area does that cover?
It's 1,000 feet from the property boundaries. That's what we're required to send notice to.
You only had one objection, and you couldn't clarify the objection?
Yes, we had, we had one objection to the property owner. Now, if you looked at the numbers on your, on your zoning map, it was going to be property owner number five. It's currently vacant land. It borders on the east property line. He was concerned, you know, about a, a business being operated in a residential zoning district, and I don't obviously know the specifics of his concerns. I can speculate that I think it's just maybe the person did not understand our current zoning regulations, that all properties in the county are zoned residential. Any kind of business activity you want to do on that property requires a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
We did have two other people reach out to me and wanted a copy of the file, and I did speak to them verbally, but they did not submit any written comments. And so, as you know, verbal comments really aren't part of the written record, because I don't want to speculate on what their concerns are.
Well, I think the planning commission has looked at this, and I believe what was a seven-o vote in favor of granting this. So I would make the motion that we approve this case.
And that would be based on the seven factors and six conditions, correct?
Correct.
As listed?
Certainly.
Second?
They moved and seconded to approve the request for planning a zoning case 2021 to I-05. Any further discussion? No. Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Sellers, do you want to take discussion on C?
Yes. I'd like to introduce to the commission today Dusty Taka, who is a Rangeland Management Specialist for the United States Department of Agriculture. I believe his office is at 18 East 7th Avenue in South Hutchinson. I met Dusty a couple of years ago at a soil conservation meeting that I attended, and I believe Commissioner Hurst has known Dusty longer than that and worked with him. I've since had several conversations with Dusty about Rangeland management. And after Chief Beer's comments to us a month or so ago in regard to Fire District Two and the problems related to it, Dusty called me and suggested that he had some charts and some maps that might better enlighten the commission on what's occurred in the history of that area. So I asked Dusty with the chairman's permission to come and make some brief comments about the Sand Hills area. So Dusty?
Thank you, Commissioner Sellers. Like I said, Dusty Taka, USDA, my official title is Rangeland Management Specialist. I work for Area Office, so I don't just cover Reno County. I cover, you know, an area of 27 counties, approximately from McPherson out to Johnson City and south to the state line. So we see a lot of different landscapes, different wildfire threats, different woody encroachment levels. You get way out west, we don't, don't see a lot of woody plants yet. Here, we see a lot of it. And so, you know, I'm on the agenda today, listed as, as fire management. But really, what I'm going to speak to more is land cover historically and what's happened in the last 10, 20 years, really, and, and why that's happening. So, you know, you'll see I have a tale of fire deficit, which is also linked to a growing extreme fire threat, extreme fire events, you know, which we've been witnessing in the, in the Hutchinson Sand Hills area, north and east of town here. So that, that seems kind of counterproductive to say that. We have a fire deficit and a growing extreme fire threat, but the two are heavily linked together. A lot of this data or maps, maps that have been, or data that's been compiled into maps, I should say, is, is something that's fairly recent technology, where they, they ground truth stuff, and then we use land satellite imagery, and then plug it all into a, to a monster computing engine, and it cranks this, cranks these maps out. It pixelates the maps based on, on the land cover. Basically, the satellites can tell the difference between herbaceous vegetation, grass, weeds, as opposed to woody growth, heavy fuels, in our case, eastern red cedar. So, and our problem here is not just a local problem. We see this on a, on a, on a, on a big scale here through, through the central part of the state, in fact, through the central part of the Great Plains. Now, what we have going on here, particularly as Commissioner Sellers mentioned, in what would be Reno County Fire District Two, the Sand Hills area, north and east of town, is somewhat unique due to the urban expansion that's occurring there and the problems that that presents. But the woody encroachment itself is not unique to, to our situation here. So here you can see, so the, the blue area would be basically non, non-woody encroached land. So that's still open grassland. When you see it start to tinge yellow and tan, those areas are, are at threat. There's trees beginning there, there's seed source. It's, it's gonna, those, those get livened up pretty quick with tree growth. And the areas in red have pretty much already been taken by trees. So here in the year 2000, and then you can see what happens just in the course of 18 years. It's, it's pretty extreme. And, you know, we've, we've approached this through USDA and farm bill programs, federal taxpayer dollars, in a lot of different angles. We've always, we've always pushed and pushed and pushed prescribed burning, because we've always known that that was really the root of the problem when it comes to woody expansion. You know, if you, if you have seed and you have lack of fire, you're going to have woody encroachment. And where you have woody encroachment, you have tree overgrowth, and where you have tree overgrowth, you have increased extreme fire threat because of, because of these heavy fuels. Right? But we've, we've thrown, and I, I say throw fairly confidently, we've thrown a lot of money at this over the years. There, just in the Great Plains alone, over the course of '04 through '08, through 25 million at brush management. A very small portion of that would have been prescribed burning incentive payments. Most of that would have been comprised of mechanical brush removal. It's very expensive. You know, and, and I wouldn't say that we've caught the problem. We spent the money, and the problem keeps expanding despite that. So what we're doing isn't working. Looking a little bit closer at Kansas, so you can see, let's just, well, you can, you can see the Hutchinson here, and this, this crescent-shaped thing is, is what I would call the, the Hutch Sand Hills. In 1984, so same, same style of map, green is, is pretty, pretty open, red has tree growth on it. Just kind of skipping through the years here, '93, 2003, 2012, and then last year, satellite pass. So things have filled in pretty tremendously. And you can see, I mean, on a regional basis, it's, it's not unique. So this area right over in here would be the Kansas Flint Hills. And, and we think of, we think that they burn a lot. They do. They're not immune to the problem. You can see those, those trees are down in the drainages. That's, that's where those trees are coming from there. Their fires simply aren't getting down in the drains.
Dusty, would you mind going back? Because I was looking at the Sand Hills, and I like to look at the Flint Hills.
So, '84 Flint Hills. And we've always known that the southern Flint Hills, you think of like Cali, Chautauqua County, down, down into, closer to like Bohuska, Oklahoma. More tree growth there than the northern Flint Hills, and this, this map reflects that. So it's just, just coming up the drains. Now, one unique thing to notice here, you'll see here, this would be the, the Gypsum Hills of Kansas, with Medicine, this is the Medicine River, with Medicine Lodge being right here. So the eastern, the eastern Gypsum Hills in 2012, and then we all know what happened there in March of 2016. So, look at this area right here. Anderson Creek wildfire, pretty well bombshell those trees. Now, they still got, they still have encroachment to their, to their west that continues to move west on into Comanche County. But, you know, this goes to show, I mean, fire will knock holes out of this. But that's just a, that's just a snapshot in time. Without continued use of fire, those areas will, will re-encroach because they, they have seed source all around them. You have seed, you have trees. And we're currently, we've currently launched an initiative in the Gyp Hills, the Flint Hills, and the Smoky Hills, Smoky Hills being to our north, Ellsworth, Salina area, Russell, Russell County, Lincoln County, to, to basically take those areas that are intact rangeland, non-law trees, finish the job, clean them up, and then become tree-free, seed-free, because it's easier to manage once you, once you get there. You zoom in closer to just the Hutch Sand Hills, this is, this is the same imagery. So you can see Lyons at the far upper left, Hutch in the, in the kind of lower middle, Holstead in the lower right of your screen, just to get you oriented there. '88, '92, and then I-6. You gotta, you gotta realize that this is, this is large-scale data, so it's, it's calculated like off of 480-meter pixels. So depends on when the satellite passes. Every now and then, it appears like the trees are receding. They're really not. When you look at the, at the big scale temporally, they're expanding. What happened there? '04, '08. And so what, what you, what you see is basically from the late 90s to current is when, is when the problem has really, really exploded. And that, of course, is also directly correlated with housing expansion in that area. And so, you know, when we look at this from a, from a land management perspective, if you're a, if you're an ag land manager, the farther back you can beat the trees away, the less management you have to do, because you're no longer, you're no longer patrolling your inner, your inner core of your field for trees. You're just controlling, you're just patrolling the perimeter, looking for the problems that are coming in. We, we know that, like a cedar seed, 95% of cedar seed dispersal occurs within 200 yards of the mother tree. So if you can beat the seed source back more than 200 yards from the fence, you're only going to deal with about 5% of the dispersal at your fence line. So that's, that's the concept there.
Is most of this cedars?
But most of it is, in, in our case up here. We do, we do see quite a bit of Siberian elm, Chinese elm, as people call them. You know, they were, they were widely planted in this part of the world in the late 30s, 40s, up, up through the 60s. They're in every 1870s established community in this state, planted up and down streets, you know, and then ice storms come, and they fall on houses and cars, because they're real, hindsight's 20/20, they're a terrible tree. I would, I would bargain to say that, and a lot of people would disagree with me, but if you live in this part of the world, about any tree is a terrible tree. This is a grassland state, not a, not a forested state. So by, by historic land cover and by the regimes that kept it that way, fire and grazing. Here's another example of, of what prescribed burning can do. So this is an example out of western Nebraska. This is the Les Canyon region. So this, this is I-80 and the, and the Platte River. This would be Gothenburg. North Platte would be right up here. Curtis, Nebraska would be right here. Really, really rough country with a lot of cedar encroachment. So they've got an expanding problem, just like what we see in the Sand Hills, maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit worse. And then you see there, it starts, they start to beat it back. And so they systematically, they have a, they have a prescribed burn association there. And there is the outline of their burn units over the time period that, that those trees started to recede. So they, they, they understood the problem. They didn't, they didn't jump right into the middle of the core of the cedars and start attacking. They started at the edge where, where they knew that they could, they could get a good foothold on intact rangeland and start working in the problem, rather than working where, where you'd have seed source all around what you just cleared. Doesn't make any sense to do it that way. You know, research over the years, there's, eastern red cedar invasions have been widely studied. And you can kind of see a timeline there, but we, we don't start to see a lot of study and thought put into the wildfire risk that they pose until the, after 2010. And when you look at, when you look at the, the expansion of woody encroachment on that map, the maps, both locally and regionally, you can see why. I mean, we, we don't, we don't study things. We don't really get concerned about them until we start noticing, darn, this is a problem, right? Now, cedar encroachment has, has widespread effect, all the way from, you know, land management and the, and the costs associated with it, to the impacts on livestock production. In some states, a lot of this data, as you'll notice, is, is produced out of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. So that chart on there has impacts on public education funding. If you're familiar with the state of Nebraska, section, section 36 out of every township is state-owned. The revenue off of that goes to fund their schools. If that section's covered with cedar trees, they lose, lose revenue. Now, this kind of does tie into the fire management. So if you're, if you're grassland, which this crescent-shaped area of land north and east of town that we're speaking about, used to be, should be, could be again, although it's going to be a uphill climb to make it that way. But you, you can see that the, the fire intensity, the, the temperature, the flame length, and down low there, what, what you, what you can or can't do to control the fire, but both in a prescribed fire setting as well as a emergency response situation. You know, I, I think most of that can be headed off with a hand line. So basically, we're talking a booster line off of a brush truck. And we see that in a lot of parts of the county. We get a grass fire, get on it quick, you can usually, usually shut it down. Once it gets into a juniper woodland, cedars are a, are a juniper, the, the heat goes up tremendously, the flame length goes up, the ember cast, so that the, the distance, the embers will come off and potentially start spot fires downwind, is, is, is much more significant than your general open grassland fire. And you can see on the chart above there, once you get above, above that orange line into the, into the white zone up there, control efforts on the head fire are basically ineffective. I mean, you don't attack the head fire of a, of a, of a raging crown fire through cedar trees. At that point, it's, you know, structural protection, working on the flanks to keep them from spreading, and then moving in and, and fighting the hot spots after the, the main flaming front has passed. And by and large, that's what we, that's what we see when, when something does catch fire up here on those extreme fire days, typically in the month of March. That's what it's been here lately. But, so you, you can see the difference in land cover, the causes of it, and, and how that affects firefighting. There's a little, quick little pictorial on, on what it does to livestock production. It's, it's, it's ugly. You can drop, drop earnings up, and keep in mind, this is agricultural-based revenue, so livestock grazing primarily. It can drop it down to near zero once those trees have really filled in, and, and the canopy is closed. has closed in. We have a lot of that up here. You know, that, that was a UNL paper and some kind of a Strickchaper looking picture, that upper, greater than fifty percent juniper cover, we have stuff up here that's approaching seventy percent. And frankly, the, the, it's not going to get any worse, because the canopy's already closed. There are no new cedar saplings growing underneath, because even they can't compete with the larger mother trees above. So it's just gonna stand there and be a large wildfire threat. There we go. So, and we've seen this over the years, you know, Audubon, bird groups, stuff like that, you know, they, they persist problems far earlier than livestock producers do on a, on a general basis. So we tend to react early, earlier, but still not early enough. You know, if you, if you were, if you were acting on early, you'd be, we'd be acting here before the problem gets that bad. So kind of how we think of this, the encroachment, you know, working through the different phases. You have intact prairie, that's treeless, open, open range, no incoming seed, because the seed source is beat back far enough, you just simply don't have it. If you're closer to that seed source, you might be in the dispersal phase, so that will still appear as intact prairie. However, it does have, it does have live seed sitting in it that's capable of germinating and growing trees. Should that seed go ahead and germinate, then you'll move into the recruitment phase, and then you get a whole bunch of those smaller cedars to, to, to the untrained eye. You'll drive by a lot of that and probably not even notice it, kind of miss the force for the trees, so to speak, no pun intended. But then, then you'll move into the encroachment phase, and so now those, those, those small cedars have gotten large enough to produce seed. You know, it takes a cedar four to six years before it's capable of producing seed. And keep in mind, with a cedar tree, there's male and female trees, so not all of them are going to produce seed, only females will, will produce seed. And so consequently, you don't, you don't know whether a tree is male or female until it's four to six years old. By then, it's, you know, ceiling tall. And then, once you move past the encroachment phase into what we call a state transition, you've moved from a situation that frankly is no longer grassland, it is, is juniper forest, it's, it's completely invaded, and then the problem is extremely, extremely expensive. To save time here, we'll kind of click past that. Think you kind of can get the idea of how that, how that map is pixelating stuff. So a data point of the upper star would have been categorized as red, as invaded, and a data point off the lower star would have been categorized as green and, and open. So kind of the, the general expense of managing land, if you can get on the problem early, you know, five bucks an acre for prescribed burning. And I'd say that's, well, for here, that's, that's probably about right. On, on open grassland intact prairie, two or three bucks an acre for prescribed burning is really what it actually costs to do it. Once, once the problem gets really bad, there's a bulldozer on there, I don't, we don't use a, a lot of dozers, a lot of it is skid steer and tree saw, and then they grapple them and pile them. But no matter what you do, if it's mechanical removal and you're looking at a problem that's that bad, a lot of this stuff up here is running six-hundred to fifteen-hundred bucks an acre to clear it, which, you know, you, you, you're buying the land back again, that's, you just can't, can't afford to do that. So we've, we've kind of, we've kind of switched gears a little bit USDA, and that's not to say that we're just going to abandon issues like what we have up here. We'll, we'll continue to work with producers and, and cost share on projects up there, but we're, we're trying a few new things where we didn't try before. So the Gyp Hills, the Smoky Hills, and the Flint Hills, we're now spending money on intact prairie in an attempt to keep it intact prairie, rather than chasing our tail, jumping right into the middle of forest and spending gobs and gobs of dollars to whack out a hole, only to have it re-encroached because there's seed all the way around it. You know, when you look at the federal taxpayer scene and where the money's best spent, I think you can kind of conceptualize what, what that looks like, the difference between those, those two expenditure models. But this, that, that doesn't, that doesn't solve the problem north and east of town. I don't, I don't have all the answers, and, and I'm not, you know, not here to step on toes with, with the fire service. In fact, I, I find myself off-duty USDA, on-duty county firefighter up here quite a bit when, when those events happen. And there's, the, once a fire gets started, there's, there's no other solution but to do what's been done. And I think here in recent years, there's, there's been a little bit different shift about how that's working, and a fine job is being done. What I'm attempting to get across here is that unless we change something about how land is being managed up there, and, and the working relationship between the urban sprawl and the agricultural producers, this problem is going to get exponentially worse. Because there's, there's just no, there's, there's no cure for it, and, and nobody can spend fifteen-hundred dollars an acre every ten years, because they cleared and didn't burn behind them, to, to, just to fight a losing battle. And so, you know, prescribed burn associations, public education about prescribed burning, because I'll, you know, albeit I, I put in my, my email to U-Commissioners, you know, that we have, we have a lot of folks that could use some education in prescribed burning. But we've spent and spent and spent money on all the other methods, and if, if prescribed fire is not incorporated into it, we, well, after, after twenty years of millions and millions of dollars spent, we're, we're pretty certain that, that if, if you're not going to burn, then there's no sense in spending the money to, to do those other things either, because you're just, you're not going to win. So that's, that's kind of what I, what I have for you. It's just kind of awareness of the problem, how bad it is, when it's occurred, what's driving it, and some of the possible solutions. PBA's work, work well, there are a few up here, albeit even, even when we get groups of producers together to, to burn, people are still scared because of the liability, and the liability perception increases, well, it's not just perceptions, reality increases tremendously when you're, when you're surrounded by, by homes. So.
Yes, thanks for presenting this. I have one question, and I have, maybe other commissioners have a question, but then I'd like to finalize by a comment. I was in a conversation with a landowner a week or so ago that has significant cedar trees on the property, to the extent that there's not much grass on the property. And his comment was, my property doesn't present a fire danger, because it takes the grass to ignite the cedar trees. Is that true, or is that misleading, or?
I'd say, under, under many conditions, that does hold some truth. Under the conditions that we're seeing these catastrophic events that require-
With the wind and-
That require massive emergency response, those, those conditions are kind of the cross point of, of typically higher-than-normal temperatures for the time of year, early March, high wind, which we're, we're all familiar with for March, and extremely low humidity. And that, that, that is, that is exaggerated when it comes to lengthy periods of drought. And so, you know, a cedar tree has, you know, if it's particularly up here in the sand, when it's rained a lot, a cedar tree moisture content will be extremely high, and they're, they're not, although they contain a lot of volatile oil, once you get one rolling, it'll go no matter what. But if the moisture content in the tree is high, they're, they're much more difficult to ignite. Now, if we've been dry for a year, and then you, then you cross that with, with early season, high temperature, low humidity, high wind, then, you know, it will burn. Now, herbaceous fuel is commonly the, kind of the fuse or the wick to, to get a tree fire, a crown fire going. When I say a crown fire, you're, you're talking about fire that's moving through the canopy of those cedar trees. The, the thing that you see on the news where the, where the flames are, you know, seventy feet in the air, once that gets started, then-
You don't need that bottom fuel.
There's, but no, because it will, it will crown to crown if the trees are close enough together. Now, the issue is, is that we've got, we have land fragmentation, both in land cover and oftentimes coincides with property ownership. So that's one property owner, what's, what's the property next to him have? I mean, just because his has, has no herbaceous fuel, does the property next to it have that? You know, that's the, that's the struggle. But both in that, and when you consider an ag producer right up against, you know, a non-ag resident with a house, or, or one of these housing developments, you know, you run into this fragmentation issue and then the different, the different land covers, the different risks, and the different perceptions about how that should look.
Sure. Okay, any questions from Dusty?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. Dusty, that was really informative, thank you, appreciate Commissioner Sellers inviting you here, and I appreciate you being here. How do you kill the seed?
Fire.
Fire?
Yep. So I think, there we go, that was the one I was looking for. So you can see right there, I mean, there's a lot of, kind of disregard the, the components of risk, we're not, we won't dive off into that, but you have your different phases of woody encroachment, from intact prairie all the way up to the state in transition, where things have, where it's not rain, range land anymore, it's not grassland, it's, it's solid cedars. You can see that we have a, we have an X for fire for, for every one of those, because fire will, will, will have a positive effect on reducing trees and their seed at all those phases, whereas those other, those other methods, I mean, they have their place, but they're, but they're kind of not the, not the universal tool. So like I said before, I mean, we can, we can go in mechanically, whatever the expense, mechanically remove trees from a quarter section of land, but all the seed is still sitting in the soil, and we can't gather that up with a bulldozer or a skid steer. The only thing that will do the seed in, and the small saplings that, that result from that seed, is burn. That's, that's really the only method.
So, you know, the area you keep pointing out is, is in my district, the sand hills, and I know the district well, and it seems like we have, like, an issue that's exponentially harder to address, because what you're saying is we need to burn all of it, and every time a fire gets started, you know, the firefighters are just trying to hose it down. I mean, you see, when you drive through there now, you see where cedars have been half-burned, where they've extinguished them. And I assume that's an even worse fire risk, because it's now brown.
Yeah, probably not a lot, many, many times, so a fire like that will actually insulate a, a cedar tree from future fire, because you've burned off the bottom boughs, so like, any fire that gets in under it has to get up higher to get into the cedar needles, which is where all the volatile oil in the tree is.
That makes sense, but your point about needing to burn, like, nobody wants fire out there. And it seems like we've, we've come to a point where it's not very feasible to burn in a lot of those areas.
It's not feasible to run prescribed fire through there in the traditional sense, as it stands right now. It would have to have mechanical removal followed by fire.
Okay.
That, that would be the logical approach. Another, another tool in the toolbox that many people aren't using, and there's a common complaint about this, but is, is fire during the growing season. So most of, most of what we've been talking about, or I think what most people conceptualize when I say prescribed burning, is purposeful burning of agricultural fields in the months of March and April, because that's, that's how we've always done it, right? Burning in the months of late July, August, September have, have a much greater effect at a, at a much lower risk, as far as your fire escaping and that sort of thing, than burning in the spring. Typically, the water content in the trees is going to be higher, they tend not to explode. The herbaceous fuel has, has a lot of green in it, the fire is not near as flashy, not as volatile, and it's, but the fire's hotter, because you've, you've now combined your fire temperature with much higher ambient air temperature. And you, you basically just heat kill the cedar trees, rather than send them up in a ball of flame. So it's, it's a lot safer prospect to do it in that manner, and I would, I would heavily advise that, even, even doing, following the logistical approach, doing the mechanical removal, followed by prescribed burning, I would still advise the, the burn prescription to be for that growing season burn, summer burn, as opposed to the spring burn, because it's of its higher efficacy on tree kill, and it's the safety factor. Now, there are a few downsides to it. It's, it's a smoky fire, so you have to be very, very aware of roadways, surrounding houses, airport, those sorts of things. Also, our weather tends to be not near as volatile up and down that time of year as it is in March and April. So it's, it's a lot safer scenario. Now, the one, the one gripe that we hate, we get a lot from folks about that when I mention that, the sand hills, is well, if I burn in August and nothing regrows, sandy, just pure sand soil, it'll blow all winter. Yeah, that's certainly a risk. But I, I oppose that, which is the worst risk, having a, having a quarter section covered with cedar trees, or having a little bit of sand sifting around for one winter? Certainly not the first time sand sifted around that country, those dunes got there by wind.
So I've, I've got one more question and then a comment. Are there funding resources available to do the mechanical removal?
There, there are. The primary, at this point, the, the primary farm bill program that has money available for that is called EQIP, E-Q-I-P, Environmental Quality Incentives Program, government, we have acronyms for everything. And there's, and it's competitive application process, so not everybody that submits an application will get funded, there's, there's limited funds. But much of, much of the tree work that you've seen going on up here, you know, I won't speak to personal information stuff, but I won't speak to individual areas, but I will say that a lot of the tree clearing that you see up there, where you drive by and you see the trees have been cut and piled and then later burned, are, are the result of, of cost share through, through that program. Because frankly, it's, it's very, very cost-inhibitive to go out and loan if you don't have some financial assistance for most of these, that's just the reality.
How long does it take to get an application in and reviewed, and what are the normal chances?
We, we crank them through once, once a year. We, we just finished, well, we're currently in the process of obligating funds to the federal fiscal year twenty-one applications that are funded. So, so the people that applied last fall that are going to be funded are currently being notified that they're funded, and if they have brush management, mechanical tree removal. In their, in their plan of operations for that contract, you will probably, many of the skid steers that you see rolling this fall and winter will be a result of applications that were submitted in the previous year. That gives you an idea of kind of how that federal timeline works.
Okay.
Slow.
Well, it seems to me like we need a better plan. I was wondering if this commission would, would be willing to, to set, set a directive to our emergency management group to, to make some recommendations as to how we can better coordinate mitigation of, of our fire risk. I know we just set a deadline for emergency management on another issue last week, and so, you know, maybe a three-month window, or just an initial draft of how we can better mitigate some of the, the higher-risk areas of our county. Just to understand how we can, how we can help as a commission, I think would be appropriate if the other commissioners agree.
Daniel, I'm glad that you're bringing up what you have. I don't know how we should perceive it. I think Dusty talks to this issue on a little different way than Chief Beer does, but it's the same issue, is you say you're, that's your district, and so you have concern. Well, I think all of us commissioners have concern about- Well, I think all of us commissioners have concern about every district in the county, and, and as you do. I am very concerned that if we don't try harder to mitigate some of this, just like you've suggested, that Chief Beer and Fire District Two cannot be successful in the future. And to me, what it boils down to is, X person's house cannot be saved if we don't look at this harder than we've done in the past. And, and again, Dusty's taken more time than I asked the commission for this morning, but I, I think we, that the people in that area have got to realize that they're part of a long-range, very dangerous situation. And yes, the county's got some responsibility, but, but we do fund Fire District Two, but I'm not sure that funding's going to protect them. So, Ron, you've been around a long time, so, in, in conservation, so.
My ball head flashing on you.
You have a, a comment that, and then we need to move on. We've taken a lot of time here.
Right after the fire, big fire, three years ago, Chief Beer made a, District Two made a concentrated effort. They had at least two meetings, and Dusty, you were there, you presented, and, and asked, let people know in that area to come to a meeting to learn about how to protect their houses, and learn about how to protect, and what to do with regarding to containing those cedars. And I don't know, it's up to the individual to do that. And if they don't pay attention, I don't know what more we can do, except try to continue an educational process. But I, I appreciated your comments at those meetings, and, and running through and telling people just exactly what was going to happen, and how they could prevent it from happening. And, and so, I, I think that Chief Beer, after that made it, the District Two made an attempt to do that. You know, cedar trees are really handy, because you can cut them off, and they won't grow back, you know? And then you only have, and then, within two years, you got to go out and get the little ones, which are a lot easier to handle. I know we got to borrow a pit, that we let something grow up too quick, and now we're facing little ones to go coming up. You know, I wish I had an answer to, to, for people to understand, that, you know, you attack a little bit at a time. You know, you, you allocate a few funds each year to start moving in, and it's a lot easier once you get it done, and grass will come back. And you didn't, you didn't touch on this, but all those trees use a tremendous amount of water. And water is becoming more of a need as we go forward with population and contamination and so forth, that it's amazing how much water a cedar tree will utilize.
Particularly out of the sand.
Yes.
So, I, I thought an adult cedar, on a hot summer day, when it's heavily transpiring and growing, could use upwards of 40 gallons per tree, per day.
And also, I, 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 Trigg, when we were working on this resolution a few years ago, why, to see what a true prescribed burning association can actually do, and what they can accomplish, and what's available out there to them. And, and I think, I would like to see more like the Pretty Prairie Burn Association out there. There's no reason why other areas can't do the same thing, because there's only a certain amount of people that can actually be involved to be effective in a burn association. You know, I don't, it's 20 or 25, whatever it is, but if we had, you know, if, if people would get together and contact you, and say, hey, we want to, we want to do this, you would, you would cut down on some intrusion in the process. It's not going to solve, it's all going to take a period of time, but you don't want to fire again like we had up here, nor what they had down in the medicine lodge area.
I, I would like to see, like, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, but I think we can do more, and, and I would like to see in the recommendation, you know, perhaps a carrot and stick approach. Like, there's certainly things we can do, and there's probably more we can offer from resources on our side. There's probably some, some negative things that we could also do, and I think those might be necessary, because, I mean, the entire county is, is taking on the burden of, of the risks that these, these management, land management issues are causing. The city of Hutchinson is taking on risk with their firefighters. All of these firefighters are taking on risk to their, their lives.
All these fires up here are requiring county-wide response.
And so, we have risk of life, risk of property, significant amount of, of taxes that are being used to fight these fires. And we don't always see that, but we're still paying for it. Like, somebody's paying for all of this. And so, I think, you know, we may need to look at something, if the positive reinforcement's not working, that, you know, some negative reinforcement might be necessary to, to properly address this risk, because it's getting worse. And some, at some point, if Chief Beer's going to come here, and, you know, firefighter's going to lose his life, or her life, or we're going to lose more homes, and I don't think that is necessary.
What about an example, if you could get one area, one, one owner of a quarter, say, and would involve him to show, be a test facility, be an example? Maybe you could work, maybe that's one theory that we could work with, is, is try to find someone out there, and then put the, you and our department, and landowner together, that might be a thought.
Go ahead. Just to move this along, I'd, I'd make a motion to direct the county emergency management to coordinate with the, the fire, Hutch Fire Fire Districts, Dusty here, and landowners to come up with both some positive and negative reinforcement recommendations to deliver back to us in three months.
Three months is a good time. I second that motion.
Okay. I move the idea of having emergency management and Kansas Forest Service with Dusty and Fire Department.
Yeah, and landowners, too.
Landowners, to develop with, and get something back to us within three months.
Yep. Is that feasible, Adam?
I would, can we move something in three months? I would, I would.
Just a draft, it doesn't have to be a formal.
I would advise that, I mean, player, players on a, on other government entity level, I mean, so I'm federal, so USDA, Kansas Forest Service certainly has some qualified individuals that can be tapped here, so.
Bring whoever you want.
I think the idea was to bring in professionals in the.
Yeah, and it don't feel like it needs like a formal report, it's just, bring us something to, to continue the discussion, I think is what we're looking for.
Thank you, Dusty, very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on it?
I'm getting ready. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirst?
Yes.
Okay. Lease to purchase for both a new ambulance and remount of an additional ambulance by Dave Johnston, EMS. And give us patience here, we'll get through.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Johnston, Reno County EMS Chief. This morning, I'm here to discuss options and seek authorization to use a, for the, the hospital to use a lease program to replace two ambulances in our existing fleet. What I'm proposing is, is to replace one ambulance entirely. The new ambulance's cost is at $205,000, and then additionally, remount an existing ambulance. So, the remounting of the ambulance is taking the, the patient box off, and moving it onto a new chassis. This is kind of a standard industry practice. Usually, you'll remount a, a box typically once, but during that process, they go through and essentially inspect it, new wiring, and ensure it's up to speed, and then they'll put it onto a new chassis. So, the background on this is, the scheduled replacement of ambulances last year was delayed, financial impact of revenue issues, and, and the pandemic. Along with that delay have come increased repair costs, we've risen to the point of some safety concerns, and, and some delayed responses, because overall unit downtime, as we have to have some of these units in for service. So, there is an attachment in a presentation that looks at our existing fleet, and I will tell you, we are going after two ambulances that we're seeking to replace in the fleet. It would be the vehicle 34 and 36. You can see the existing mileage on both of those is fairly high, and you look over the past five years, we spent a neighborhood of $50,000 to $65,000 each on those in maintenance repair. I'll let you know that we're targeting these this year, hopefully with a lease program, and in the coming years, we're, we're looking for our, the two ambulances above, 28 and 33. Both of those are older ambulances, and I'll tell you the reason, the delay on that. Those ambulances currently fit into our Arlington station. There's a height requirement, and then those are our only ambulances that fit in there. So, we want to continue to maintain those until we work through issues out at that Arlington station. So, the, the lease that I'm asking to use, in lieu of cash, this is be a, a five-year lease, at the end of that, we would own the ambulances. It's at a 3.74% interest rate. Overall, the life of the, the lease program would come to 3,058, sorry, $358,430. That's about, the interest on that is a cost of about $31,000. I, I do believe that we will have significant savings in our repairs that can offset some of that cost, that interest that we would pay on it. Additionally, I don't have it here in the cost, that we plan to auction off the ambulances once we do have these new ambulances in the fleets, who would have some money coming back to principal to offset that. But we want to delay getting rid of those, so we have the new ones in, in the fleet. So, with that, I'm asking, I, I have already presented this to the hospital board, and they, they've approved, and they're moving forward with the lease program, and I wanted to seek your approval before I move forward with it.
What kind of warranties with the lease program do you have repaired, do you?
So, they, they cover, it's typically the manufacturer on the actual chassis, so three years, 36,000 miles, and the box, they'll have a manufacturer for at least a three year. One of the advantages, and I talk about in this, is fleet standardization. The box that we're going to remount, it's an AV as a manufacturer, and we want to go with that manufacturer again. It's really best practice to go with the, the original manufacturer on that. They'll extend the existing lease, I'm sorry, warranty on that for three years, since they built the box, they feel like they'll warranty it again. So, for any of the, the wiring issues that might come up, or electrical problems that we have with that.
I know in our meetings, why, we've talked about that lease, and it seemed like a pretty good deal.
Yeah. So, I, the, the intent is, is this year, the, the ongoing cost would be right at $71,600. That would keep us within our authorized budget this year, and then we could plan for that in our coming budget process. This would relieve some of the pressure on that budget request I'd put in about two weeks ago, that we could discuss removing an ambulance in that request. And then, I would say, additionally, we are working for the subsequent years on, on grant programs, especially in the rural portion out in Arlington. We believe that we might be successful in obtaining a grant for an ambulance in that district.
So, Dave, with this lease purchase that you're requesting, will you be able to amend your 2022 requested budget to us?
Yes, I will.
Should be able to.
Yes, I should be able to remove an outright purchase, and I had a remount in there. So, I should be able to amend it down some, and, and hopefully with the grant, I'll have more news, hopefully by the time we hit in July timeframe.
Well, please get that revised, revision to the county administrators as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Make a difference. I move we approve the lease purchase, the request by the ambulance service to proceed.
Option one, the lease purchase.
Yes.
Your second? I'll second it.
I've, I've got.
Discussion?
Yeah. Randy, where, which budget does this come out of?
This comes out of the, well, the general fund courthouse has, courthouse general has a line item that we allocate to the hospital for EMS, and then we give them the money. So, this will come out of their EMS budget through the hospital. It's part of what we reimburse them on costs for.
What's, so, it's just a general, it's not a cap, capital budget?
Because this is their operations, it's owned by the hospital.
We contract, the county contracts with the hospital to provide EMS services in specific areas.
So, we don't own the ambulance?
No.
So, you don't own the ambulance, but it is within the agreement that if services are terminated, they do go to the county, they return to the county.
Any other question?
Randy, what, what's our balance on our capital equipment budget, or capital equipment fund?
I have to look, I don't have that in front of me.
Five million? Not for?
Not for the cash we have available? Maybe a million? But I don't have the exact number.
Well, I'm, one of the, just the only thing rolling around in my head is, we do sit on some significant amount of cash at the county, and I know some of that's reserved, but whether we just pay it outright and save the $31,000, or, or, which would be option two, you would recommend against that?
Yeah, for them to purchase that, that would come out of, the hospital would pay that, and then that loss, I guess, between their revenues and expenditures, they would then just bill us. We wouldn't actually purchase something that the hospital owned.
Good question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirst?
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate your support.
Thanks for answering those other questions, Mr. Sellers.
No problems. Next up on the agenda is solid waste update by Megan Davidson, Director of the Landfill.
Good morning. Megan Davidson, Solid Waste Director. So, it is my turn to give the annual update to you for the landfill. We've had a lot going on in the past year, a lot going on currently. Going back to kind of 2020, our, we're big in our safety program out at the landfill, and back in December, we actually hit five years of no lost time on an accident out at the landfill. And currently, we are still, still going good over there. We're at five years and about four months. We hold annual safety meetings every week. We also have training videos for the new employees that start. We do onsite training on equipment. We also celebrate with, you know, we reward our employees, and we wear the lime grain safety jackets, and we, you know, do things like that for them. So, we are very proud of that safety record. It's been, this will be our second five-year term on a safety record out of the landfill. Last year, of course, with COVID, it was a busy year. I did give you guys a couple graphs, just to show a five-year trend on MSW, which is municipal solid waste in our construction demolition, to show you kind of how busy we actually were, and then the trends in the last five years on both of those, just so you can see on, that's in tons, for tonnages, on the material that comes out. Construction demolition, of course, is your roofing, lumber, any construction debris, and of course, municipal solid waste is anything basically that you can put in your trashcan, so. Some major projects, obviously, we accomplished in 2020, we had, we closed Mohawk Road to the south of Clark and Mohawk, and our employees out there, we did the Mohawk turnaround that you, as commission, approved. approved. It doesn't get used very often, but it looks good, and it's there and available if it needs to be used out there at the landfill. We are currently excavating for cell eight, which will be our, the next cell that'll be constructed in 2022. And we have about two to three months left of dirt excavation, and we do that by saving the county quite a bit of money by doing our own self-performing on the dirt work for a cell to begin construction. For our new facilities, we completed the pad construction for the new skill house and customer convenience center the end of April. And as of last Thursday, we, Conco is starting their project now with the construction. So you'll see a lot of activity out there, starting, basically, they started this week, but we had meetings last week, and they'll be, they're already out onsite, beginning work. And upcoming for this year, we have our gas collection system. We are regulated in, by the state to install gas wells in each cell that we construct four years after we open up a current cell. So in, on cell seven, we have to have gas wells installed into the cell by the end of this year. So I'll be coming back sometime in the next couple of months to get approval for those gas wells to be installed for the state by the end of the year. And looking forward in the future for 2022, our cell eight, we will be doing it for construction for next year as we go on with our master plan of the landfill. I don't know if you all know of the spring cleanups that happened around the city of Hutch or the surrounding cities in Reno County. I just kind of gave you some numbers to go off of. City of Hutch just finished up their cleanup on the weekend of April twenty-third and twenty, twenty-third through twenty-fifth. And Stutzman's actually brought in all these big roll-off containers, and they brought in over a hundred and thirty-five tons of material, anywhere from the trash, metal appliances, tires. Quite a bit of material was cleaned up over the citywide cleanups that they had. City of Arlington and Nickerson, and I also know Pretty Prairie has also had that in the last couple of weeks for citywide cleanups. Bueller, I believe, was another one. We also have our household hazardous waste. We accept chemicals, paints, that type of thing, material that from residential, residents in Reno County. We also have a trailer that we actually take out to surrounding cities here in Reno County. And a couple of those that I listed was Bueller, Pretty Prairie, Sylvia, and then also Rice County. They get our H H W trailer, and they fill it up and then bring it back. And then anything that can be reused goes into our reuse building, and then the rest has to be sent off for recycling. And then at the end, I finally just did some numbers on our household hazardous waste. We placed over fifty-two point three-seven tons of household hazardous waste material in their reuse building, and it was available to the public. And we did twenty-four tons of used oil was sent off to be recycled, and we had eight-and-a-half tons of batteries that were picked up for recycling in 2020. And there was approximately nine hundred and forty-five tons of metal was picked up in 2020, just to give you some numbers on what we do out at the landfill. Do you have any questions?
Tons of metal includes the white goods.
Yeah, that's refrigerators, freezers, anything to that material.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, go on.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda, I guess, that was my update for the landfill. Now we have the resolution. Back in March, we had come to in front of commission in regards to our rates when it comes to the landfill fees that we currently charge. And in conversations at the meeting and after the meeting, I've come back to you with a recommendation for our residential versus commercial use on user rates to leave the residential household unit per year at ninety-six dollars, and the commercial unit, per unit will be a hundred and six dollars. When we originally were here in March, it was talked and discussed about having residential and the commercial user rates be both at a hundred and two dollars per unit. I went back and did some figures. We went back and did some data on our financial model, changed some things, and looking at the numbers and having discussions with everyone, my recommendation would be to leave the residential at ninety-six dollars and then also increase the commercials to a hundred and six dollars. This will, in, in the future years, we'll, we'll have to reevaluate every year how many, you know, units of solid waste is, our tonnage is coming in, evaluate our, our equipment costs that we utilize out at the landfill when we purchase equipment, any big projects that are coming up. It all, in the financial model that we have, it all takes all these things into consideration, including our new project that's going on currently that we have a bond for. And then also in this resolution, the construction and demolition, starting in January of 2022, we're looking at charging residentials and commerce, any business entity, a ten-dollar per ton tipping fee to bring construction demolition to the landfill. There is a ten-dollar minimum, so you, no matter if you don't have, if you have less than one ton of debris, you will pay a minimum of ten dollars. If it is mixed with, with trash in the load when it comes out to the landfill and is not separated to go to the different sites, then it will be a twenty-dollar per ton fee on that. There also has been a discussion on larger projects here in Reno County for construction, construction debris, anything over a thousand tons, anytime any building that is demoed in the city or Reno County. We have always asked to have them call so we can do kind of a walkthrough to let them know what can and cannot go into a construction demolition site. But any of those projects that are one thousand tons or more, after they've been inspected, and if disposal is coming out to the landfill in a larger project scheme, those projects will be effective actually for a C and D tipping fee effective this year, September first of 2021. And a thousand tons of C and D material is, it's a large building. You know, a hotel or the old, I believe it was a hospital on Monroe Street that they've discussed at some point maybe tearing down. At the current rate, we do things now, when those, when those buildings are tore down, they're assessed a user fee for units of solid waste. Now it's going to be a, it's construction demolition tipping fee basically to bring out, because that's the material, but it is.
The only comments I had received from people had related to do with the C and D, and they also had realized that the normal user fee is, needs to be defined as what's normally used in a, in a household waste, which normally would be your trash that comes out of a, out of a household.
Correct.
And I think that was a little misunderstanding with people that said, well, you paid this fee all along, so why not do the, the C and D? And really, that's a, that is a normal cost of operation to only handle the household waste.
Yes. And a user fee status, it is based off of what you can put in your household trash for a user fee, anything extra. You know, of course, we're, we're doing a little bit differently than, than a lot of other entities do with, with landfills. On this user fee, you know, we are also, you know, this will also include just construction demolition fee will be a tipping fee only, but you can still bring out brush, you can still bring out compost, you can still bring out your metal appliances, refrigerators, freezers, you know, any of that material will be technically included in that user fee that we'll charge. And tires.
A lot of times when we go and get new tires, we're paying a fee there for that.
Yes, correct.
Commissioner Hurst, I think you explained the, what the normal household waste issue is. I think you explained that well. I had similar emails just recently on the construction and demolition. I go back to my survey of three significant construction companies in town. They all thought that we were being much more generous than the other counties that they operate in on the C and D. Nobody likes an extra cost, but I think it's well to put the costs where the expenses are. And so the increase in the commercial and the C and D, I think, is where we should charge instead of the residential use.
Well put. And I appreciate the fact that we kept the user fee down.
The, so if, and I think this is what you said, Mr. Chairman, but the, if somebody rolls up with some construction materials and municipal waste, then it's twenty dollars.
Yeah, if they, if they are not willing to separate it when you go to the landfill, you come across the scale, if they take their C and D, two C and D, and then they take it, their trash, and they throw it in the container, you know, that's there for trash, it will only be a ten-dollar fee. But if they, you know, if, most of those are your big commercial loads that come in, and you drop off a big thirty, forty-yard roll-off container, and it's supposed to be a construction demolition container from a construction company, but there's a lot of plastics and trash debris that's, you know, thirty percent trash, and then seventy percent the rest of that is construction demolition. Those are the charges. But if it's a residential that's got just a couple bags of trash, they're willing to throw them off into the other trash bin, that will be still a ten-dollar fee.
And I think that's the extra charge of that is due to the fact that only certain items can go into C and D, and, and the, the balance has to go over into the solid waste or other part of it.
That's correct.
And then your employees, our employees, have to go out and manually pull that out.
Yes, everything that comes into our landfill site, whether it's on the municipal solid waste side or the C and D side, our, our employees physically have to pull out tires, they have to pull out any trash debris, they touch everything that comes out onsite.
So if you roll up in your truck and have just municipal waste without C and D, there's no charge?
That is correct. That'll be on that ninety-six dollar user fee per, per year.
Well, I appreciate the fact that we went back and reviewed this and brought back a recommendation that does not increase residential rates, because I think we've begun to realize that our rate structure is a little out of balance, and the residential users are probably still overpaying a little bit compared to the commercial users. So I'm glad we have not increased residential rates. And also appreciate the consolidation of the user fees to a less complex system. I know there was some confusing terminology related to apartments and hotels that has been removed, and I think that's a good move as well. I do think there's work to be done on these fees. I still think they're out of balance. I think we've got the data to prove that now. What's our plan for next steps on user fees?
So at this point, I will need recommendations on what you would like to see. I mean, typically, how we, how we do this, we evaluate every year, update our model, update our budget when, you know, the year end is here. If you would like to see something different as far as the, the structure of how we do things currently to something different toward, you know, there's a different type of a structure you would like to see of a tipping fee type thing, then, you know, it will take more work on our part to just go through and, and evaluate those costs before we come next year in the January, February months of 2022.
Maybe we should get this over the finish line, and then maybe halfway through the year, we can start working on evaluating the user fees again a little bit, maybe. I'd make a motion to approve the recommendation on item seven E one.
What's the resolution number?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Second motion.
All right. I like that idea, Commissioner Friesen, take a look at it six months on down the line. So there's no other discussion. Roll call on resolution twenty, twenty-one dash eleven.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes. Thank you.
Chairman, I know our budget request people have been waiting patiently, but could we have a five-minute recess?
I would say we have a five-minute recess, and if there are those that need to get back to their office in a hurry or something, that have a special meeting or anything, please let us know, and we'll try to do the job. I don't mean to put it out of order, but arts up first is arts and humanities council. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Michelle Wong, and I'm here with Jim French, and we are the county appointees to the Hutchinson Reno County Arts and Humanities Council. And we are just here today to thank you for the county's support and ask for your continued support as we go about our work in celebrating arts and culture in Hutchinson and Reno County. Jim's going to talk more specifically about some of the things that we've done over the past year. And of course, with the last year, it's been rather a challenge in the arts and humanities area because of the pandemic. But we've, we've done some creative and out-of-the-box things, and we're, we're pretty excited about the direction we're going. One of the things we did over the last year was we developed a mission and a vision statement for our council. And I know you just received a handout with some of the information about what we're going over today. I would direct you to page nine of your handouts. There's no page number, sorry, it's the ninth slide. And it does explain our mission and our vision, and I'm just going to briefly mention our vision statement of the Hutchinson Reno County Arts and Humanities Council, and that is to unite and celebrate our diverse community around its heritage, arts, and culture. And there's so many things that go into that here in Reno County that we're really excited and proud about, and I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and he's going to talk a little bit more about those specifics.
We give thank you to, to the county and commission for the support that you've given over the years to the arts and humanities. It is a committee that's both combined with the city and the county, and we receive funds from both. And, but for this, this year, the county money has primarily been used to, with the farmers market in collaboration with them and providing music at the time, and also with activities with Third Thursday, which really brings, brings in a lot of traffic into, into the city for those Third Thursday activities. But also, what's really happened in the last year is that this, even though things have been slowed down and kind of sometimes shut down with our programmer that we've worked with and with, with Hutch Rec and Tony Finley's leadership, a lot of innovation is taking place, especially around technology. I just want to emphasize that we've, we've worked with other groups in providing leadership and also providing technical assistance and training for what do you do when you can't have live performances and how to do things online, how to do those, those sorts of activities. One of the big activities that came with that was this called Live from Memorial Hall, and, and it was a virtual event that took place. We had members of the symphony, we had local schools that came in with their choruses and their bands, and they played in convention hall, and that was broadcast available, not only to the community, but anybody that wanted to come in. So our, our county and the activities there were available and had exposure potentially well beyond the boundaries of Reno County. That sort of activity also is continuing in that, in that training and technical assistance. We've also done surveys so that those kind of services are available, maybe even to local churches, in advising about what do you do, how do you get those out of there. So just in coming here, I think there's, you see in your, in the report, a whole range of activities that occurred. And I think for the county, I think what we have is that, I think potentially, we'd like to be able to even to do more outside the city limits. I know that Judge Becker and Daryl Pope really have been considering doing a kind of rural arts cowboy poetry event, maybe using the bunkhouse and that. So just some ideas have already been percolating for grants that maybe could be assisted there that, that this, that, that our committee and our use there could extend well beyond the city and to help some of the small communities and activities that might come up. So thank you again for this opportunity to, to come before you. I hope maybe in the future, we see that, that investing in the arts and humanities also has a strong economic impact as people come in and use our communities and take part in even in our smaller communities outside. So thank you for your support, and, and if there's any questions, we've got Tony here as well that, that could answer that. But we hope that we approve this year, but maybe for next year, maybe we could come in at some point and, and look at some of the economic opportunities and so ways in which maybe additional funding could help us our program. programming beyond the city limits of Hutchinson. Thank you so much.
You know, I, I saw one little event over in the Flat Hills that was an idea. And the idea has extremely increased, you know, people that come to the Flint Hills Symphony. So thinking outside the box, that somebody has an idea. Any other?
Well, my only, uh, comment is I appreciate the efforts to reorganize this past year and I, from everything I know, the reorganization has gone very, very well. Uh, obviously with the, uh, COVID crisis, you've been restricted on some things. Uh, I think you're very well organized for the future. And I think Jim makes a good comment that arts and humanities have something to do with economic development. Uh, we've seen time after time that people that want to live in Hutchinson or Reno County, uh, want to have activities in their community. And I think you're filling a void that, uh, is, is well-needed and glad to support it.
Yeah, I, I echo those comments. Appreciate, uh, your volunteer work and your efforts. And I agree, uh, certainly, this is a small amount and, and I think it can be leveraged for, um, economic development for sure. So very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Quality of life has been shown very important. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Reno County Extension Office, Pam Paulson.
Good morning. I'm Pam Paulson. I'm the agriculture agent with Reno County Extension. And Carl Cohen is our Reno County Extension Board Chair this year. Um, and, you know, we've had a challenging year, but we, we appreciate the support from the county. Again, I'm happy to announce that we do have our new ag agent. He's starting his second week on the job. So, um, Marcus Pointinger is from Texas. He was an extension agent there and we convinced him to move to Kansas. And so he was supposed to be here today, but our, our agronomy specialist picked him up and is taking him around to, to look at some of the, um, the crops and kind of give him the, give him a little rundown of what's going on in Reno County. So, um, I said it was, last year was a challenging year with just being shut down and, and limited staff, but we were still able to, um, do quite a few things. What I sent you is just kind of the summary at the end of the year, but a few highlights. Um, we actually grew our 4H program this year. We, we have an increase in enrollment and we've added one new 4H club. So even though we were shut down, not able to do everything we could do, we still grew the 4H program. With, um, help of our Fair Board and volunteers, we were able to hold the fair in person and, um, managed to do it safely. We still held club days. We did a virtual discovery days for the kids. And we also, you know, the clubs still met. When they couldn't meet in person, we gave them guidelines on how they could still meet and assisted them to meet virtually. It still completes many of those activities. Um, they were not able to go to camp last year. They're opening camp up again this year, um, in a limited basis. So we've already, they're limiting how many we can send to camp and we maxed that out and have a waiting list now for, um, members that can go. We also worked with the farmer's market and helped them to get safe opening and, um, work with their vendors to, to deal with all the, the safety requirements. This year, we've got a grant and are partnering with the Health Department to get SNAP benefits accepted at the farmer's market. And so they open up May 22nd and, and people can bring their SNAP EBT cards and, um, and purchase fresh fruits and vegetables now. We still worked with, despite not having an agriculture agent for most of the year, we still worked with other counties and had test plots and field days when we could. Um, and the other county agents really helped support us in answering questions and, and helping continue with that work. We were able to do some of our Schick and Medicare counseling as well. And, um, we even were able to hold most of our volunteer training for master gardeners and master naturalists in person until things got, so we needed to shut down. And then we just moved right into virtual and really didn't miss a step there. Um, but with that said, you know, we've, we've been short about one and a half staff members this year. We're, our board just voted last week to, to fill the next position. So we're, got that process started. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be fully staffed and, um, but we're not asking just for the economics of, of right now, we're not asking for an increase for next year. We're just asking to be held the same as we were this year and last year. So, enough. Carl, if you have anything to add or?
Well, I know we worked diligently to try to address the 4H issue. And, um, we as a team have very much on the outside supported the 4H program, means we didn't have an actual person there, an agent. Um, we, uh, did have a, a question about all that and, uh, I'd hopefully Pam's emails to everybody answered any of those questions.
We do have a full-time program, 4H program assistant. So anything we were able to do, we still did do. You know, we weren't able to get into the schools and do school enrichment like we usually do, but we still provided, you know, kits for teachers to check out and do some online classes. Or, um, we had some, you know, kids that all of a sudden became homeschool kids that were able to use those kids also. So, any questions?
With the SNAP program with the Health Department, does a vendor get qualified or approved or how does that work?
The entire market does. And so there's just one, there'll be one station where, um, clients can scan their, their EBT card and then they'll get tokens to shop at the market. And with us starting that this year, that qualifies us next year to, um, get in the double up food bucks program. So next year, for every dollar they spend, they'll get $2 in tokens. So.
Any other questions?
Well, I was the one asking about the, um, and it was based on, on questions from a constituent, um, related to, um, was it the 4H agent?
Uh huh.
Um, wasn't, wasn't staffed last year and, and it was, um, a line item in your budget and, and an item we funded. And so I think the question was, you know, when are we going to replace that person? And, and did you say that person is going to be replaced?
They are. We're just, we're, it's kind of a process where we, you know, we can fill one agent position and, and we work through case state to do that. And so, um, you know, we have to, the board has to approve it. And then we have to go through the, um, advertising process and the screening. And so it takes, you know, two to three months to do that. And we had started that process with our agriculture agent last year when everything shut down and we were under a hiring freeze. But it also didn't make sense to bring somebody in when we're all working from home and they really couldn't do anything. So then, as soon as we were able to, we started that process. So.
And when do you expect that staff person to be back online?
Hopefully by the end of this year. So we've got, um, for our next position, we've got, just last week, we, the board voted to go ahead and start that process. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reno County 4H Fair, Megan Miller, Jason Stollman.
Hi, I'm Megan Miller. I am the treasurer of the Reno County Fair Board. Um, Jason Stollman is with me. He is the president of the livestock sale committee and he's the one that can answer any of your livestock sale questions. Sorry, Jason.
Right under the bus.
Yep, there we go.
All right.
Um, but, uh, we're both here because we do want to thank you for your, your support over the years of, of the Reno County Fair and, and all of the youth, um, that, that impacts the fair and, and come and, and participates in whether it's the livestock or the foods, the photography, uh, 4H, FFA scouts, that type of thing, even our open class exhibits for, for youth and adults. So, um, in our proposal, um, we did ask for a small increase, um, from 16,500 up to 20,000. And I have some, some reasons to justify this. Um, the pandemic did affect us as well. We were able to, to hold a fair in person, but some of our, our extra activities, um, we weren't able to do safely. So those had to, uh, to, to be eliminated last year. But I can, um, gladly say that they are coming back this year. We, uh, we start our fair on July 17th, which is a Saturday with the dog show. And I invite you guys out to all of the activities. If you visit www.rino countyfair.com, um, there you can find a list of, um, all of our activities. We have a schedule of events. We have all of our fair books, even our open class fair book, where, um, anybody in the public is, is open to participate. And we really welcome and encourage, um, participation from both kids and adults who aren't necessarily associated with, um, the 4H, the FFA or, or the scouts program. So we do offer a lot of extra opportunities to, to all of the citizens of Reno County. Um, the majority of our fair gets started on, um, Tuesday, July 20th with the fashion review. And then we move to the fairgrounds on Wednesday. Thursday, um, the 22nd is our main day, uh, for what we call static exhibits. The foods, the photography, the crafts, the woodworking, you know, that type of thing. And that's held on the state fairgrounds in the Pride of Kansas Building. Uh, Friday, we, we start a lot of our animal shows. Um, and the, the one thing I do want to highlight on Friday and invite each one of you to personally is our ranch rodeo, which will be held on Friday, the 23rd, um, at 7:00 PM at the, uh, open, the open air horse arena. So that was something we weren't able to do last year, but we are bringing that back. And, uh, we're really excited. And we have a, a committee who is actively working on, on pulling all the pieces together and, and getting participants for that. So we are, we're looking to grow that activity even more than we have in the past. Um, Saturday and Sunday, we also have, you know, animal shows and activities. Sunday, the other event that, um, I'd like to, you know, invite you guys to is, um, Sunday, July 25th, starting at 5:00, we offer, um, Free Family Fun Night. We, that's the best creative name that we could come up with. But, um, we'll have a, a free meal, we'll have inflatables, we'll have a pedal pull. Um, and we're talking about, um, different ways that we can expand that activity as well. Just encourage, um, individuals to get out, come see the animals, come see the, the static exhibits, um, really see what all of the youth programs here in Reno County can offer families who may not be involved. So we're, we're really trying to encourage some participation that way. We're also looking at ways that we can still maintain safety, um, depending upon, um, hopefully the coronavirus won't be, uh, very active here in the county, but we'll, we'll maintain, um, hand sanitizing stations. We're still looking at, um, increasing cleaning procedures to make sure things, um, are safe for all of our participants and any individuals that would come join us at the fair. And then Monday, we kind of wrap things up. And, um, Jason would probably invite you to the livestock sale, which starts Monday at 7:00, um, at, I believe, the Beef Pavilion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Prairie Pavilion, thank you. So that's always a, a fun event just to really celebrate the kids' hard work and, um, because they put a lot of, of energy and time and dedication into their projects and to really, you know, celebrate that. So, um, when looking at the expenses, um, some of the reasons for our increase, um, I think one of the, the main ones is our facility rental, uh, for the Kansas State Fairgrounds. I called and talked, um, with them recently. And last year, I wrote a check to them for $10,570. This year, our projected, um, bill and, and I was, Nathan had shared with me that it'll be based on how much equipment we need, which is based on how many participants we have. So it, it's a rough estimate, but he's anticipating our projected bill this year to be about $11,500. And I asked him about, uh, 20, the year '22 for our fair then, can we expect an increase? What does that look like? And he told me to budget about a 3% to 5% increase in costs, which would take us somewhere in the neighborhood of around $12,000. Um, and that's just to give us a space to be able to have the fair. So that's a pretty significant part of our budget right there, um, when we talk about expenses. Um, also with COVID last year, I think it's important to note that we just had families who, um, weren't comfortable coming to the fair. So we saw, um, a small decrease in the number of participants or the number of projects that we had entered in the fair, something that we weren't sure was going to happen, but it did. Um, so inadvertently, our premiums and our, the cost of judges, um, was lower last year. Um, we didn't pay judges as much because they didn't stay as long. Because they got through all their judging and were able to leave and we pay them by the hour. Um, and of course premiums, we had fewer projects. We anticipate those numbers going back up for judges and for premiums. Um, with, with people becoming more comfortable, uh, and wanting to get out of the house and do more things. And as, um, Pam Paulson had said, that the 4H numbers are increasing, that we anticipate that those costs for, um, judges and premiums will probably also go up. And I estimated that even, you know, somewhere in, if we conservatively say, you know, the $4,000 range for judges and, and the $3,000 range for premiums. I did give you guys, um, a comparison over the last five years, just to kind of see what goes up, what goes down, um, you know, things we've eliminated. So we don't have those costs anymore, that type of thing. Um, one of the other major expenses that I, I definitely want to note, because it's, it's something we're looking at, is our insurance that we carry. It's over $1,000 now for us. Um, and it, it's something we can't go without. We have to have it in case there's an accident. But that is, that is another, um, important thing.
It's actually required by the state fair.
Okay, it's required by the state fair. Um, so we can't lose that. Um, also, there is one thing that I did want to point out when you're looking at the comparisons. Um, if you look at the other sponsors line, you'll, it looks like we had a $2,000 increase in, uh, sponsorships. And I wanted to explain that briefly, where that, that $2,000 increase more or less is coming from. In the past, when we did the barbecue, um, we had two sponsors that were $1,000 sponsors that were allocated for the barbecue. So when we, we looked at whether it was a, a loss or a gain, that $2,000 sponsorship was factored into the barbecue piece. When we stepped back from the barbecue and kind of reevaluated, um, our plan, that $2,000, um, that we had received was moved to our general, um, sponsorship fund. So it's, so when you look at it, it moves from about, about $2,000 higher. That's kind of where it's coming from. Um, so really, in, in that case, the sponsorships didn't really change all that much for us. Um, and in fact, this year so far, uh, I went back and calculated, we're sitting at about $7,000 in sponsorships in our general fund. So we're about 400, um, short to where we were last year. So, um, I guess I'm pleased with that number because I wasn't sure how COVID would affect, um, some of our sponsorships. Some have not come back this year, um, but we have been able to, um, retain some new sponsorships, which is, is very hopeful for us. Um, a couple other things that I want to point out when we look at the budget, um, and justification for why we're asking for an increase, we are really trying to engage the, um, I guess the, the citizens of Reno County, whether it's the, the youth who aren't involved in 4H, FFA or scouts, um, or even adults. So we are really, um, trying to offer a lot of open classes and, um, and special contests. And so with that, we usually offer prize money, um, to kind of, uh, entice people to come and, and participate and see what the fair is about. So last year, um, we spent $1,190 on those special contests. And we are, as a board, we are really trying to push more, um, advertising and more marketing onto our open class, um, and, and really try to encourage and increase that participation. So I would, I would like to think that that number would go up slightly, um, if we have more participation in the, the open class contest. We also have, um, an open class sponsor. And if we, if that sponsor doesn't come back and, um, it, it's a two-part sponsor, we've only gotten one half of it this year so far. So there's one half still up in the air we may have to cover. That would increase our out-of-pocket open class special contest to around $1,500 that we would have to come up with. So as, and, and then we have little things like our inflatables for $1,100, the pedal pull for 500. Or we, um, in the horse arena, we, we usually contract to bring in, um, a sound system and that usually runs us about 300. So just different things to really kind of enhance the, the fair. Um, and when we start adding all of that up, it, it starts to, uh, it gets us past the, the 16.5 and, and really, you know, getting close to even the sponsorships that we have coming in. So, um, with, with that being said, I guess the only other, um, comment that I would make on, on the justification for increase, right now, we do have a, a ribbon sponsor, um, for the, the 4H and, and the FFA. If, if we were to drop that sponsor, um, and the plaques that go with it, the Fair Board would have to come up with somewhere around $3,000 to $4,000 to cover the cost of those ribbons. So we're very thankful for that sponsor, um, because that is another huge expense that we have to factor in and, and plan for in case they are. and, and plan for in case they are unable to, to do that in the future. So that's kind of, uh, where we're at. And Jason and I open up our, open ourselves up to any questions that you guys may have for us.
I have a couple of questions. Megan, Megan and Jason, you can tell your enthusiasm for what you do with your presentation. And I thank you for your enthusiasm and hard work that you do for this, this fair each year. Uh, Jason, uh, a big, huge part of the budget is the money taken in on the sale, but the huge part of the expense is the money paid to producers. Is that just a, whatever you sell the cow for, you give to the person?
Yeah, so, so the way the sale operates, i- it's a premium auction for the most part, right? So the, the kids, i- it's a donation to the kids. So, so majority of the money that comes in, a business or person sponsors that kid basically, right? And they, they bid by that animal, if you will, that money comes in. Most of that money goes right back out to that kid. Uh, the, the livestock committee does keep a commission, if you will, off of that to operate. Um, what we do as far as the auction and that sort of thing. And a, a small percentage of that also goes back to the fair board, uh, to help pay, kind of pay your own way, if you will, right? Um, uh, for, for building and, and some of those other things.
And the board doesn't feel like the, uh, amount paid to the producer could be reduced a little bit to offset some of your other expenses?
Probably not a whole lot. Um, you know, you, you start taking too much out of those kids' checks, which we currently take just a hair over five percent. Uh-huh. Um, you know, it, it becomes beneficial for them to just take them home and, and go to the sale barn at that point. I mean, we're, uh, a- as a livestock committee, that, that five percent, one percent goes to the fair board. We keep four percent in the committee, uh, budget. And, and that is used to not only operate the sale, but we also have a scholarship fund out of that, that we give scholarships to college-bound students. Um, and we, we also donate five hundred dollars back to the fair board every year to help pay for the livestock judges, because livestock judges are a lot more expensive than our static exhibit judges, so.
Well, thank you for that explanation. Only other question I had is, it, to me, if I see one part of our economy in Reno County that's really, uh, solid and flush right now is the, uh, ag, particularly the crop side, maybe not quite so much the livestock, but the crop side. Uh, you, you can't do better on fundraising and sponsorships. It just seems like to me that, that the businesses in Reno County that are oriented towards this have had some good years. And yet they don't seem to be participating in your event.
Yeah, we send out, um, over three hundred requests, um, to different businesses and, and they're predominantly agricultural related. Um, and I, I apologize for not having the, the number that have come in this year. Um, I guess I'd reference you back to our, our website. All of our sponsors are listed there. But we, we definitely do not get, um, a good return on, on, I guess, interest on, on who would be interested in coming and helping sponsor.
Okay. I, I, I think we do all right in the ag, ag business world, honestly. I, I think it's all the other businesses is where we probably fall short that don't, out of the community that don't support the 4H program as a whole. You know, as we think about the John Deere's, Shield Ags, the, you, you know, you go down that list. Those people are at the fair supporting, whether it's to the fair board itself or through the livestock sale.
That's a good point. There are some sponsors that will, will go through the livestock sale.
So that hundred and ten thousand in some ways can be considered sponsorships.
Yeah, it, because really it is. I mean, it's a donation to the kids.
Thank you.
I think it's sponsorship of the youth's efforts, uh, rather than the whole concept of the 4H fair as far as their, 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 uh, donations in there. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but that's the way I would, I would look at it. Uh, one of the things, I think the scholarship program is big. Uh, and you get some other sponsors with that scholarship program. And, uh, and not only is it just a livestock sale, I believe you sell other things. They're started off with, with foods and, and some things like that. But the championship gets a chance to, uh, partake in that, uh, overall sale. Uh, one of the things that I would throw up for an idea is, is I know my wife's a big sister, big, in the big sister program.
Yep.
And I know she's worked with her little sis to, uh, maybe put something together to, to show. So I would encourage you to look at or think about, uh, association with Boys and Girls Club and Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mike, please. Thank you for sitting through.
Good morning. I'm Mike Garrett, CEO of Horizon's Mental Health Center. Um, I didn't provide you any, you any additional information other than the original budget request, but I'll hit some highlights on there. Um, the first document is the, uh, number of uninsured individuals that we see not only across our five county service area, but here in Reno County too. I think it's important to point out that we are a safety net clinic. And basically what that means is we don't turn any way, anybody away regardless of their ability to pay. And so we provide a lot of free service to a lot of individuals, or we provide services at a very steep discount. I think the, um, typical fee for the uninsured that's on our sliding fee scale is less than ten percent of our standard charge. And we use the county money as well as our state money to underwrite the cost of that care. We are a professional service organization. We have two psychiatrists, five mid-level prescribers, probably thirty-five, uh, master level clinicians and about seventy-five bachelor's level case managers. And, uh, uh, so, so we spend a lot of money on salaries in order to provide that direct care to individuals that are really in need. You'll notice that on the, on the first, uh, document, there was a significant increase in the number of uninsured individuals across our, uh, five county service area and here in Reno County. That went up about twenty-five percent. Um, I gave you, and I apologize for the font, it's incredibly small, but I wanted to give you kind of a ten-year run at how many uninsured individuals that we see. And up till about twenty-fourteen, it was in that twenty-five to thirty range. At, at fourteen, twenty-fourteen, it kind of bumped up into that thirty to thirty-five range, percent of our uninsured. And this last year, it bumped up to forty-six percent, which was pretty significant. I think that really speaks to the number of individuals that lost jobs and their, uh, benefits and the impact that the pandemic had upon, uh, businesses and their ability to empower people. Um, the next document that I provided is the funding analysis. Um, I did, um, ask for a five percent increase last year, and the county granted that increase this year. I'm just requesting to maintain that current level of funding. So no increase has been, uh, requested. I also provided you, uh, a document that identified our, um, February financial statement. Um, we've obviously closed March already. We're, we've closed April, but I don't have those financials yet. March was a good month for us, but with that projection, we're still looking at, uh, projecting about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar loss for this year. Uh, we run on a fiscal year, July one through June thirtieth. Uh, so it's kind of out of sync with what the county does, but we're projecting a, uh, loss of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand. And that is with, uh, about nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of provider relief funds and some Cares money that came through the state. We were not eligible for the PPP program, so we didn't receive any funding through that. Um, we did not lay any individuals off. Uh, we didn't have a reduction in force. Uh, we had only about a ten percent reduction in the number of consumers that we see, which was interesting. But the last document is the number of billable hours that we provided, and that was down about twenty percent. And what we found is that during the really, um, heightened periods of the pandemic, probably from September to January, where, where the numbers were really bad, it was very hard to, um, engage individuals. Uh, we used a lot of telehealth services. Uh, we were seeing some individuals face-to-face that were in crisis or that would come in for intake services, but it was predominantly telehealth. We moved back more to more face-to-face now, only about twenty-five percent of our services are through telehealth means. Um, we were not able to engage people typically on a face-to-face. We might work with them for forty-five minutes or an hour. And we were, um, challenged to engage them for fifteen minutes. And especially with our children's services, when schools went all virtual, kids were on Zoom, uh, most of the day. And then we were trying to access services for the afternoon and evening, and they didn't, um, didn't want to do that, to be real, real frank. Uh, but we did see an increase in our crisis services, unfortunately. Um, the other part that I, I'd say is our board, um, just approved our budget. We met last Thursday, and for cal-, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we're projecting a positive margin of one-half percent, point five percent. So it's really a break-even budget that we're, um, anticipating this coming year. The other, uh, point that I would make is I think our partnership with the county has been incredibly successful, and I think that's going to be expanding over this next year. Uh, we have had our clinician in the jail for several years now, as well as a re-entry clerk in the jail. That's a cost, uh, sharing, uh, agreement with the county. I think that's been successful. I think Sheriff Henderson thought so. Um, and I think the current sheriff would agree with that assessment. We have a couple of new initiatives that I think are going to prove to be beneficial to the city as well as the county here in Reno County, but also in our, our area offices. Um, we've developed a co-responder program, which is a ride-along with the, uh, HPD individual to deal with any mental health issues that may be on that call and try to keep them from being arrested, taken to jail or taken to the emergency room. Um, we're also developing a mobile crisis response for those individuals that may not be responsive to the co-responder. But this will be a mobile crisis team made up of five mental health, uh, service providers to try to help stabilize that person and there again, prevent them from going to jail or, uh, going to the emergency room. We're also going to be, uh, opening up a crisis stabilization unit for adults. Uh, there again, that's, that's been sought by our community for a long time. Um, and it's really focused on diverting people out of the ED as well as out of jails, stabilizing them and returning them to the community. The other partnership that I, I almost forgot was with Reno County Health Department. They received an opioid grant that we're, uh, participating in. And we just began a MAT program, uh, this week, a medication-assisted treatment program, which our psychiatrists and mid-levels had to be trained on in order to prescribe medications that reduce the cravings of the, uh, opioids as well as, um, keep the opioids from having any effect on the person. I think I said that right, that it, it impacts the, uh, uh, synaptic level where if they ingest the opioid, it doesn't do anything for them. They don't get the high that they were before. And so we begun that program just this last week, and we're really hopeful that that will address a lot of the substance abuse problems in the county as well. Um, so in summary, uh, we're requesting that the funding remain the same for, uh, calendar year twenty-twenty-two, uh, that the county commission provided last year. Questions that you might have?
Mr. Sellers?
Well, I think you always provide us with very good detail of our operation and finances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is, uh, Reno County Museum, Martin Michael Abels.
You've been here a while this morning, so you've caught it all.
Yes, I have. And I'm actually going to keep my mask on. I have a, kind of a catch in my throat, so I don't want to cough on anything or anybody. So, uh, I'm actually here today with, uh, Betty Taylor, uh, as I'm sure that most, Betty knows everybody, so. Well, again, good morning and, uh, again, thank you so much, uh, for allowing me to come in today and speak with you today. Uh, the last year and this year has been an enormous challenge, uh, to us all. However, the challenge for the museum has been to educate and inspire, uh, others from afar. And that has been what the museum has been doing. Uh, part of the last year, the museum was planning, uh, moving forward with exhibits and programs, uh, and ways we can improve the community outreach. And then COVID hit, and then that changed everything. Uh, I'm sure that you, uh, I, I don't have to tell you how complicated that really was. COVID, COVID made us all rethink about the way that we can influence and, uh, influence the community in a different way. Therefore, last year, we invested some time into writing grants and to help us find ways to do projects and programs and ways we can improve lives from afar. In fact, uh, this is something that we continue to do even this year. Last year, we received a grant to digitize the Pat Mitchell collection, a local historian, uh, from the Hutchison Community Foundation. This means that the Reno County Museum will have over thirty thousand artifacts available online for anyone and anywhere. They will have access to this collection and then some. The museum did this, so our collection was used rather than stored. So people have an idea and understand the culture of Reno County. The Reno County Museum wants more people to have access to these stories, to our history. This year, the Reno County Museum was awarded one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars from the Changemakers at Work Grant. This grant was, uh, allowed the museum to capture the people of Reno County in a video series. This project alone will allow us to celebrate Hutchison and Reno County during our sesquicentennial. Try to pronounce that three times fast. By honoring our community and its citizens through engaging videos that put a new spin on collecting and sharing oral histories. The Reno County Museum began the video series this year with Solomon Butler, an African-American Olympian who went to Hutchison High School back in early nineteen hundreds. In fact, according to our records, some of Saul's records, some of Saul's track records still hold today. Pretty impressive. Currently, we are working with the Cosmosphere on our latest and greatest project, doing a video about Patty Carey, the wife of Emerson Carey. She was the founder of the Cosmosphere back in nineteen sixty-two, and we continue to do more collaborations. The purpose of these videos will work to display our history and to enlighten our community about our past. But most recently, to educate people about the sesquicentennial, the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Reno County. The museum is a part of the sesquicentennial, uh, committee. A committee dedicated to celebrating a hundred and fifty years in the effort to, to improve our community awareness, the hundred and fifty years anniversary. The museum has developed monoliths that displays various people, places that make up the foundation of our community. In fact, uh, we delivered one not long ago, uh, in fact, a couple, about a day ago, I think.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, to the county courthouse. And we will continue to do that through this year to celebrate our sesquicentennial. Our intent is to develop several of these monoliths, again, over the course of this year, so everyone throughout Reno County can understand the amazing history that we are all a part of. In fact, I appreciate the fact that what my staff has accomplished during these uncertain times. However, the work is far from over. As we start edging closer and closer to what I hope is normalcy, we have started to see more and more residents start coming out, start enjoying the museum. So our focus shifts to make more of these stories possible. But to also, it is necessary for improvements to the museum and our exhibits. Therefore, for twenty-twenty-two, the museum is requesting two hundred and five thousand dollars. I realize that's a significant increase. However, these funds will go towards waging I realize that's a significant increase. However, these funds will go towards waging increases and then designated for repairs, necessary repairs, designated for the facility carpet repairs leading into the children's area, which is a high-traffic area, and of course, enhancing our exhibits so we can share those amazing stories. With your continued support, we can increase the impact of our community. I truly appreciate the opportunity to come in today, gentlemen, and speak with you. Thank you once again. I will answer any of your questions at this time.
Michael, thank you for being here. Betty, thank you for being here and all the involvement that Betty has in our community. I might have heard wrong, but you're doing a project on Patty Carey, and you said the wife of Emerson Carey. Patty was the wife of Howard Carey, I believe. Help me. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Which is a very important person to our community, but Emerson was a generation before.
My fault.
So the question I have, and I'm not good at reading financial statements, but your February balance sheet that you provided us shows an income last year of $9,000, but a equity increase of $34,000. Is that, is that due to the fact that you don't have to show PPP money as income?
We actually didn't receive from the Reno County Museum aspect. We did not receive PPP money. What that is, I believe, is the Houston Whiteside account, which is designated set aside.
So is that investment income? I don't understand the $34,000 gain in your equity if it's not shown in income. If you gained in your funds, you would show that as an income item, I would think.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the endowment fund, and we did not request the income from that fund to be released for operating expenses.
That is correct.
So it rolled back into the endowment fund.
So that's the increase last year in the endowment asset?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my question still is valid, is if you've got more endowed funds, why aren't you using that for operations?
Well, at this point in time, the museum is utilizing those funds for rainy days. Obviously, one of the things that we were experiencing was a close down during the COVID act, and we just didn't know how those funds were actually going to be applied. Obviously, we can see that having those funds stored for whatever situation, again, we have no idea, we have no crystal ball, and I wish that we did, but unfortunately, we just don't exactly know how those funds could be used in the future. But if we utilize those funds for our operating account, then we start running out. And then when something truly does happen, then we're truly up a creek.
Okay, I understand your answer and accept your answer. Better define, if you didn't receive PPP money, what is your income line item 4400 that says PPP to transfer? What is that?
That was not the original.
Maybe it's a different PPP. Everybody thinks PPP.
It was the second round.
Yes. I believe that what you're talking about is the second round of the PPP funds. The museum and the second round did receive some of that funding.
Okay. But I just thought you said earlier you didn't receive any PPP.
For 2020.
For 2020.
Yes, sir.
Reno County Museum is an important part of our culture and society, and we need to help, but it's a big task.
Mr. Freezey?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next up is Tech by Brenda Maxi.
Brenda, you're clearing the room. Did you realize that, that these people?
Starting to feel like I was in elementary school and it was time to pick the sports team. I was always the last one there. So, good morning, commissioners. I'm Brenda Maxi, President and CEO of Tech Incorporated. Along with me is Kevin Hess, our Vice President. So we want to thank the Commission for the last 48 years of partnering with Tech to provide services to people with developmental disabilities in Reno County. We are celebrating 48 years of providing services to our community. When we began in 1973, we had six clients, employed five staff people, and operated a $30,000 budget. Forty-eight years later, we employ 120 staff. We touch the lives of well over 250 of Reno County's most vulnerable citizens. We operate a $7 million budget, and we continue to do work that is hard to put a value on. The people we serve have also changed significantly in the last 48 years. The folks today still have a diagnosis of an intellectual developmental disability, but many also have very complex medical needs, including things as Parkinson's, COPD, Caesar disorders, spina bifida, others that require G-tube feeding and continual repositioning in order to avoid skin breakdown. We are also serving more people with a dual diagnosis of intellectual disability as well as mental illness. In the last 25 years, the folks that we serve are also living much, much longer than was ever projected for them to live. Thirty-six percent of the folks Tech serves are over the age of 50. Thirty-two of those folks are between the ages of 62 and 85. This group of individuals often require a different type and a different level of service. As with the general population, we serve those that will experience a variety of different health issues, including strokes, heart attacks, cancer, Alzheimer's, dementia. Those diagnoses specifically require a much greater level of service. Tech, in partnership with our community resources, also provide end-of-life care so that residents can remain at home for their last days. Our children and family services comprise 13% of the population we serve. During the last year, we saw a much greater demand for supports from this group of folks due to the pandemic. Online school was especially difficult for this population. We had a record number of single-parent households, foster families, and second-generation families reaching out to us for help, specifically related to behavioral issues due to the lack of structure and the unknown that these kiddos were experiencing. Tech experienced a variety of issues during the past year with all of our day services being closed. We saw an increase in the need for mental health-related services for the people that we serve, the feelings of isolation, being separated from family for almost a year. Loss of routine structure in the daily life resulted in anxiety, behavioral outbursts, and depression. If not for our partnerships with Horizon's Mental Health Center, Hutchinson Hospital, Larnard State Hospital, and Parsons State Hospital Outreach Team, I'm unsure that the people that we serve will have done as well as they did during the pandemic. The pandemic also took a toll on our direct support professionals, those who work one-on-one with the clients. The shortage of staff due to sickness, quarantine rules, virtual school responsibility of parents resulted in many staff working double shifts, going weeks without a day off. When we experienced locations with one or more positive COVID clients, we had several of our staff that stepped up to the plate and volunteered to work overtime hours at those houses. We have an incredible team of dedicated staff working for Tech. The staff were rewarded with bonuses and pay increases. However, we still lost more staff than what we gained. Despite the bonuses and COVID-related pay increases, the shortage of staff continues. As of this morning, I am sitting with 22 vacant direct support professional positions. Overtime for the covering of these vacancies, last payroll ran right around 1,100 hours for two-week period. We offered a $500 signing bonus to see if we could produce more applicants. We had one applicant in a three-week period. Additional pay increases are planned for later this year, but we are still unsure that it will result in a significant reduction of the number of vacant positions that we currently have. The pandemic also put on hold for us several home repair improvement projects, including repair of significant water damage. The quarantining of the group homes for the entire year did not allow for any of our contractors to be able to go into the homes to provide the much-needed work. We're currently in the process of scheduling contractors to perform approximately $500,000 worth of repair and upkeep on several of our group homes and our tech work center. Y'all know that it was a rough year for everyone, not just Tech, and we know that. But we have just an incredible and amazing group of staff, as well as the people that we serve, who continue to just shine throughout this entire period. Our community has continued to show support to Tech as well as the people we serve, and Tech could not continue to do the work that we do without the support of our county commission and the people of our community. Tech is considered fully open, at this point, very happy to say, although we do take strict COVID precautions and monitor the community spread. We are hosting our first in-person fundraising event in over a year, and the response from our community has been overwhelming. We once again look forward to not only being a part of our great community, but being in our greater community. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about Tech or any of the amazing people that we serve.
Mr. Sellers?
Nice presentation, a good presentation. I'm interested in the last document that you provided us, which on the top part of that sheet says a 2021 budgeted and 2022 budgeted, and includes our funds of $510,000 for both years, and the total for that shows that there's no increase for 2022 in your total budget. Is that, am I reading what you mean, that you're not intending to increase your budget next year?
At the time we submitted these documents, we did not. We have, hopefully, received an increase from the legislature. Five percent, I believe, will go into effect on July 1st, keeping in mind we don't count on that money until July 2nd.
And is that, which line item is that on here that would be increasing? HCBS?
It would be our HCBS revenues.
So you might get 5% more there?
Correct. We were actually scheduled to receive that last year, and the legislature had approved a 5% increase for fiscal year 2021. And due to the pandemic, the governor did a governor's budget allotment and swept that 5%, so we saw none of that increase. Again, we won't count on that until July 2nd.
No, thank you for being here today. You provide a very valuable service to our community, and, you know, it's, I appreciated your presentation as well and the notation of our long, long partnership together, so thank you.
Thank you for presenting. I think your comment about your clients are living much longer than they did 25, 35 years ago, but that also increased your costs.
Yes, it does. Our oldest client right now, I believe, is 85. Just an amazing man, truly. But 25 years ago, you would have not expected this individual who has significant needs to live as long as he has lived. But along with that, we see a variety of different health issues associated with aging. And for the folks that we serve, Alzheimer and dementia have generally a pretty early onset. For a person with Down Syndrome, we would typically see that kind of an offset in their early 40s. And as you can imagine, that requires a very different level of service than the majority of the folks that we serve, and we're seeing more and more of that as our population ages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, and you're waiting.
Yeah, thank you for waiting.
County Administrator's Report.
The first item I have on in my report is, we talked about it at the last meeting, was signs of meaning. I mentioned signs mainly for the law enforcement center, a couple of different signs of law enforcement center lettering, and then a possible backlit sign of the emergency management logo. And then Reno County Emergency Management had made some adjustments to the sign, kind of how it is going, would look on the right side of the front entrance of the law enforcement center. This would kind of match what the City of Hutchinson has for the police department, kind of even it out so that the, and the intent is, is really just so both sides have equal size, both sides of the door have equal size of signs, so that they, it looks like it was symmetrical or meant to be, be there like that. After the last meeting, did a little bit of discussions with people, and the law enforcement center really is the, the entrance to that really is only used by the Hutchinson Police Department, and then the Reno County Emergency Management Department, and then fire district chiefs that go see emergency management. Other departments or agencies in that building go through the courthouse entrance. So, and Lori Moody, our communication specialist, has been also working on a directional sign, quite a bit smaller than what the annex has, but a small directional sign to put in front of the courthouse that would show the various departments in the courthouse and the law enforcement center, so people go to the right entrance. It would not be, it has some, maybe a little bit of historical look for the courthouse, but would not overshadow anything else that's in front of the courthouse. We don't have a dollar amount for that sign yet, but in talking with Lori, and when she's talking to different companies, we think it would be less than $1,500. What I have on here today on the recommendation is for the county commission to authorize this Reno County Emergency Management sign at a cost, a total cost of $11,496. That's with installation. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, it was closer to $14,000, well over $14,000. Harlan had discussions with other sign companies, got a lower amount, and then came back to the local company that matched the lower price. So that's where, it went down about $3,000. So my recommendation is to ask for the commission to approve the recommended sign options for both emergency management, along with the directional sign, for us not to spend more than $1,500 on that one, on the additional sign.
Can you entertain a motion for that? One of the options, the recommended sign options for both emergency management sign, along with the directional sign in front of the courthouse, at a cost of $11,496 and not more than $1,500 for the directional sign. And I would make that motion. And I would make that motion.
So, now we're in a situation here with Commissioner Sellers' conflict.
And he acknowledges that fact.
So I have two thoughts. One is, like, to me, I think the budgets are kind of reversed for the signage. Like, and I don't, I don't necessarily feel like just because the City of Hutch put in a really nice sign, that we need to put in just as nice of a sign, just because they did something. On the other hand, I don't want to devalue the fact that, you know, it's also a county building, it's also, you know, emergency management needs to be recognized that they're there. But I'm having trouble saying that we're going to put a sign in front of the courthouse that's $1,500, that's going to provide directional information for all kinds of departments, and then spending $11,500 for one department.
Here's where I come in, Commissioner Freezin, is the fact that with the, help me if I'm, if I'm wrong here on this, Randy, but with the security systems involved in this, that because it's hard at times to get from the entrance of the courthouse to where the emergency management is, that a directional sign there would help people, instead of coming in and having to go back out, that they could know that the emergency management is down in the other entryway. Is that fair assessment?
Right. For the sign on the building, the actual emergency management, it's not just for emergency management, they, staff knows where they're going. But it's for other people, when there's an EOC, that they know that's where emergency management is. With training, a lot of people know where Emergency Operations Center is, when there is one, that's put on by Adam, but if they don't, if they're, if they're one of the mayors or council members, commissioners in a smaller city, on a countywide event, say, well, yeah, go to the building by the courthouse. Well, there's a couple of different, this is having a sign, that's where emergency management is. The other sign, the smaller sign, that's been talked about in the past, and at one time, I think we had things on the front door, the sliding doors, you know, an arrow for law enforcement center, and listed some different build, we talked about putting the different departments. It's also letting people know, kind of like at the annex, here are the departments in this building, over at the courthouse, this is where you go for human resources, even though the one says law enforcement center, the sheriff's office, you go through the courthouse. So it's a lot smaller, and just to help people when they first show up in front of the courthouse, which side they're going to, and what's, what departments are inside the courthouse versus maybe over at the annex, or what isn't the law enforcement center.
I'm not disputing that it's going to be a real nice sign worth $11,000. I'm just, just, I think it's too much for one department.
I kind of look at it from the time I've been involved in a couple of incidences, but it's certainly nice to know if I'm, if I was out of town, so to speak, and had to come in to, which I was, and had to be part of an incident, so I know what was going on and how to direct people. And I didn't think much of the sign before, but I get to thinking more and more about it, and.
I think the sign looks great. Like, I don't, like, and I know it's going to look good. I think it looks really good.
Yeah, sign's really good. So your question is more on the directional sign?
I'm just whether we spend $11,000 for. And it's just an awkward situation where, you know, Commissioner Sellers is here, and it's his company sign, and I'm sure it's worth $11,000. I'm just not sure I want to spend it. I wonder if we could take one more turn at this.
I guess my question, if that's what the two commissioners want to do, is what you're looking for, because at the last meeting, you know, we talked about, are there, does it make sense to put other departments on the sign also? But it really doesn't.
Maybe what we could do is make one decision for both signs, and have Lori finish, finish the signage for the front of the courthouse, and we could do it together.
So what you're, help me further understand what you want. You want Lori to redesign?
Well, Lori's working on the sign for the front of the courthouse, and maybe we could just make both decisions at the same time, instead of this.
That's kind of what my motion was, but, but, didn't get a second, you want to relook at that?
It doesn't make any sense to me that this sign's going to cost 11,000, and that sign's only going to cost 1,500.
There, the signs are very different. One, the size of them, but the 1,500 is more, and I don't have a picture here, imagine two columns with a sign surface that just lists the departments and has an arrow. This is a backlit sign, and then has lettering, so as you see from the view on the right at night, you still would see the logo, so people coming at night would still know that's where the EOC or emergency management. So it is a lot different kind of sign.
What a difference in the, in the two signs, it really is. I can understand where the funds took to put this and hook it up, and to attach it to the building, and to, and we are, it's the same trying, trying to balance things a little bit to, to look more professional, and, and, the way I really know, there is a lot of difference between the signs. You're not just putting a board up with lettering on it.
Mr. Chairman, you don't have a second for your motion, so I think we need to proceed.
Yeah, I know, we're doing things out of order here.
Okay. The.
So I guess right now, the motion will fail, so.
The next item I have is the financial reports, just to kind of list those, so you can kind of, and I'm not going to go through each one, all these have different, you know, amounts. Right now, we're in good shape, our cash balance, five funds, some of the funds increased, may have had a decrease, tax collections, test distribution, the largest ones in beginning of the year, and then even dispersments for some of the agencies throughout the year that receive money, such as mental health or tech. So that's why those show going down, most of their money comes toward the beginning of the year, before we send it out to them. Any, so we're in good shape right now. The overall grand total is 21% increase from.
Not increase, but expenditure.
Over the, the ending balance, over the beginning balance, over time, we're doing better. But that's all the funds, some are more operational, as you can see, some are reserved. As Commissioner Freezin, you asked about the capital money, CIP reserve, there's that one, a little over a million dollars. That's probably closer to the number that you had asked about earlier this morning.
Why do we carry such a big cash balance on the general fund?
For emergencies, or if we have an issue, it's common practice to have a good amount of reserve, so that if property taxes, like COVID is an example, if, if it would have hit Reno County like it hit other parts of the nation on the economy, we wouldn't have the sales tax or property tax numbers coming in at the same rate, but we would still have to be providing services. And so it gives us that opportunity to hold money back for if that emergency happens.
What's the budgeted balance at the end of the year?
It's, I would say we probably have cash balance of about 40%.
So six, seven million?
Yeah. Well, for the beginning of this year, we started with 15 million.
Oh, is that?
That was beginning of the year. But 2020 was a different year, I mean, because we got a lot of reimbursement, some of that CARES Act money reimbursed some of our costs for health department, emergency management, various other activities, and some expenditures we had for COVID related, so it actually helped our cash balance more than previous years.
Can you transfer between the general fund and other funds?
Some funds, yes. And that's, that's where the Fund 099, CIP Reserve Fund came from, that was from the general fund.
And that can be transferred to any fund?
That, no, it can be transferred back into the same fund that had transferred it into, but it can be used for any other capital expenditure. So even if it came out of the general fund, if it was a public works capital project that was an emergency needed, it could be used for that, but it wouldn't go back into that fund.
You can use general funds for capital improvements?
Yes. We also have a capital improvement fund, 09A fund, that has some of the CIP items, but not all of the CIP items. So it's kind of a mixture. And then the next page is the year-to-date expense budget report. Again, going into the general fund, the cash carryover, courthouse general, that remaining budget, 12 million, that, I think, 6.89 million of that is the cash carryover. That's where that 7 million, kind of you were talking about at the end of the year, there's almost 7 million that's set in the budget just for emergencies or cash carryover to create that balance. So without that, if you pull that out, there's, we've used 21% of the general fund year-to-date, or year-to-date when this was, report was ran. And then the other funds and departments are also in similar shape. The, again, the agencies, such as some that were here today, tech, horizons, there shows a higher percentage because they've received quarter, equal quarterly payments, depending on the taxes that we've received. They don't receive any every month.
What you're saying on these reports is that thus far this year, our budget is in good shape for 2021.
Yes, right, right now, we are in good shape. The 2022 request, we have a lot of increases, so when that comes to you guys in a couple of months, that'll maybe a different story.
And another, another reason for that little increase in cash carryover is the fact that a year ago, Commissioner Sellers, we, we did ask, a little over a year ago, we asked all the departments to cut their expenses about a million dollars in anticipation of our revenue being down that much. And it ended up, they cut it, and then our revenue stayed virtually neutral. Was that a fair assessment?
Well, if property taxes stayed neutral, our sales tax actually went up, and we had better sales tax collections than we had in previous years, when we estimating, as you mentioned, a million dollars total loss somewhere. So you're right, the cash balance in 2020 was helped by the budget cuts, increased sales tax collections, and then CARES Act money. Any questions on those, that report? And then also in the packet, was the department reports, the monthly reports, I won't go over those, but if there's anything that is missing or anything additional you guys would like to see from those reports, let me know, and I'll get with the departments on that.
I like the way we've started doing those, I think it's a good summary. It's part of the agenda, so that the public can see those reports if they so choose to look at them. I think that's a good improvement in our process this year.
I agree.
Another item, just as an update, just so you're aware, fire, the district fire chiefs, Adam has scheduled a meeting with them for May 19th in the evening, and it's in District Eight near Yoder. So I will be in attendance, along with Adam, talk, you know, as you guys had mentioned last Friday at the commission meeting, to go over the strategic plan and get some of their inputs, so that will take place next week. And yesterday, I filled out the paperwork for the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the $12 million that Reno County should be receiving, we should be receiving 6, 50% this week, sometime this week. So I filled out the paperwork, we should be good to go. The, the new number, the updated number is, has gone up just a little bit. It's now 12 million, 42,385. The previous amount was 12 million, 24,000, so.
You state that number again, Randy?
That's all I have, any questions?
Mr. Sellers, comments?
I've got three, and already did one. I like the department reports, as they're put into the agenda, and then if anyone has questions, we can ask them, I think that's a good addition. I'm asking people to consider taking their COVID shots. We seem to be kind of hitting a dead end with numbers and so forth, there are younger people available now to take the shots. I think the public should not only think about themselves, but others in this situation, and since we do have them available, I would encourage everybody to, to become vaccinated. And I appreciate the time spent today by the commission on what Mr. Taka referred to in that fire district, too. And I, I'm glad that we're going to start looking diligently at some type of long-term answer, because I, I am convinced in my mind that if we don't work towards a long-term solution, that at some point in time, we're going to have a real disaster there. It might not be this year, it might not be five years from now, but there's going to be a real disaster, because we cannot control that fire in the spring if we have a 50 mile an hour wind. So I think it's in the county's best interest to put some time and effort into long-term mitigation in that area. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I would reiterate Commissioner Sellers' points on the fire risks, and appreciate I know we're way out of time, and, well, one thing I thought through in the, in the process that we just went through with all of these funding requests, is that I'd kind of like to see the county administrator take an initial shot right off, right even before we hear the presentations of what he thinks the funding should look like, and then maybe we focus, and then maybe we could give you some initial feedback, and then we focus on requests that maybe we, we feel are not, are too high, as an example. And I think it's great to give our funding requesters an opportunity to speak. I think we might not be very efficient, and some, I think, give us a very significant report, and I think we're all going to approve it as a matter of course, and then others may not have given enough, I don't know. And I think maybe if we gave a And I think maybe if we gave a little first impression, you could direct how long they should spend communicating the budget request. Certainly appreciate the general update, but I think, I think we spent a little too much time on some of them, just as a comment. But I appreciate everybody's efforts and trying to get us up to speed on what they're doing. I'd also like to see in the next year, if we could show, from a funding perspective, on that line of how much they're requesting, I'd like to see how much their total budget is and how much outside funding, especially grant funding, they're getting. I think there's, Commissioner Sellers kind of started to hit on it a little bit. I think there's an opportunity to push all of these parties to work harder on fundraising and obtaining grants. And if there's a way to incentivize in the future, our investment and leverage that against grants, I would love to see that. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? About three or four things. One, just wanted to mention that Sheriff Campbell is a graduate of the New Sheriff's School. I wanted to thank those who provided financial assistance to Fox Theater because they had a really good opening up with Riders in the Sky Saturday night. And I went to the 6 o'clock one, my wife and I, and very well attended. And everybody enjoyed being out and seeing the Fox again. Along with what both my other commissioners said regarding the fire management type thing. And I mentioned this earlier, I would also like to see if there's an opportunity that whoever's with Emergency Management and Dusty and so forth, that they might put together a pilot program and certainly talk to the managers, the farm management firms, who oftentimes manage property for absentee landowners, as well as, as others who just live here. And to see if there's any guidance, any interest with regard to those folks of being participation. And regarding Commissioner Freezin, I, I think that, in my personal opinion, and we can talk about this sometimes, but I think many times, an administrator would like some direction from us rather than having, guessing what we might want. And so from that standpoint, I think just, we received this information here, and I think we can, we can discuss and come up with, with what we feel should be the direction as far as outside agencies' funding or concern. Because I just feel that that giving direction is, is, should, should be a little more from the far area, our end of it. And that's, that's, I just thought I'd bring that up. And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything more, Randy? We'll conclude the meeting then.